Parties, parties, that's how I know.
So I'm actually connected here. Do you want to make me a co-host and then I can help with?
Okay, sorry.
I don't know how well I'm going to be able to share and stuff. I still may need you to do those things.
No worries. All right, let me find that. Sorry, you always have to keep your mind.
So we sent you guys a participant ID. Do you have that?
Yeah, I believe this is all logged in and ready to go.
Okay, because we don't see her as a participant yet.
So we have three, six, nine, 11 in, including Chris and Winchester School Committee. Oh, that must be WinCam.
Yes.
And when we do go live and broadcast.
I hear you.
So mute me.
You are muted.
You mute your, no, turn.
I'm muted.
I'm muted.
Bella, Pam.
You're live.
I think it's WinCam.
We're live now.
Okay, so why don't you go to Broadcast on top? Well, actually, I can do it. You just. So now I believe we are broadcasting and we should be recording.
We should.
We should be able to see our participants and attendees.
It says recording at the top.
Yeah. Oh, there was like a little delay.
If you turn off the volume there. We're just getting ready, getting everything started. Could one of participants unmute yourself and speak and see if we can hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you very well. Can you hear us? Okay.
And the last time, were we able to see like the one speaking come up on the screen or was it all?
I think it was like that. It was like that.
Okay.
As far as the.
It was like this because it got.
Sorry, we're just trying to get everything worked out. As far as attendees, could somebody who hasn't raised their hand, raise their hand if you can hear us speaking? Because we want to verify. So just somebody else, raise your hand. Thank you. Just wanted to double check that people could hear us out there. Are we live on WinCam yet? Excellent. Thank you very much. Perfect. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. The October 6th School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being done in a hybrid format. Five of us are at WinCam, four members and superintendent, one member is remote, as well as the rest of Central Office. I'm going to go over the agenda and then we'll get into it. So we'll start this morning with a student report. We're fortunate to have a student here this morning, even though it's during school hours. We'll then move into public comment so the student can get, Evan can get back to school. We'll have a report discussion items on the Health Department Board of Health update. We have a report on return to school on three specific topics. We have draft district goals and improvement plan for 202021. And then we have some action items, vote to accept a Winchester Sports Foundation gift, vote to appoint the superintendent to seem collaborative board, vote to approve revised calendar 202021, and vote to approve the fall transportation plan, which we'll have discussed above. We have Chair Report, we have Superintendent Report, we have future agenda items, next meeting dates, and adjournment. So with that, I am going to welcome our student. Let me just, I guess you can welcome yourself. Evan, if you could unmute yourself and welcome to the table. And I'd love to hear from you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for having me. I'm glad I could be here. I'm lucky that I don't have a first period class because some of my courses are online. So I should be able to come to these meetings, even though apparently I can't. So as you all know, we're only a few weeks into school still, so we're kind of adjusting, but it seems that things are in full swing. Every one of these classes is pretty much adjusted to normal. Our athletics are running strong. We actually have our team, it's running and boys and girls soccer and field hockey and golf. They're, they won their matches, games, whatever, most recently, and golf is going up against Reading today. Unfortunately, Cross Country is the only team that didn't beat Reading, but we'll get there. We also, in terms of clubs and activities, we're working right now with administration on getting student council and class officer. We're actually going to have those up for the rest of the school year. And we also just sent this white recently developed a system for the club fair, which we're going to do virtually. So she put a lot of hard work into it. It's going to involve each club making a video of themselves, what their club is about. And then there will be Zoom sessions where any prospective students can join in and see what it's about, ask questions, get in contact with people who run the club. So that should be a really good launch and pad for the rest of the school year to happen. I'm sure you might have a lot of questions, so I'll leave it at that, but I'm happy to answer any and all questions. I don't have to get to school for an hour, so I've got plenty of time.
Thank you very much, Evan. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of questions and comments, but before I do, I'll open it up to the committee if anybody else has any questions or comments of Evan. Seeing none, so.
I'll ask one.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Bollinger.
I guess I was just wondering how your classes were going in, or either in person and remotely.
I think right now they're going better. Definitely that first week or so, those first two classes, there was definitely an adjustment of seeing how normal class can be. But I think by now teachers are getting routine of whether they can manage their online materials and how they're going to run an in-person class for 50 minutes instead of the 67. So it's been getting, over the last few weeks, been getting more steady and more consistent, and I feel like it feels more like normal school by now.
That's really good to hear, and my question was going to sort of piggyback on Ms. Bollinger's question. So you're at home right now because you have a remote class. That's not now, presumably you're not. That is, means that you have a remote class on, sorry, my math is getting bad, on Thursday, Friday that's taking place. One of your core classes is on Thursday, Friday. I don't want to pry into your particular schedule, but it's nice to have you here to sort of understand, you know, what, you know, a typical senior might be experiencing.
Of course, and I think I'm taking an extra course, I take an extra language, that makes my schedule a little bit unique, but it kind of represents a lot of people's schedules. So right now, my environmental science class, I'm taking it fully remote, last block of the day, so I have it on Thursdays and Fridays. That does have a conflict with my English class. So a bunch of students around the high school, mostly seniors, have this conflict on Wednesdays, which is the day that all classes are full remote. So on Wednesdays, we've worked out an agreement where I go to my English class and I don't go to my environmental class because those are only like 20-minute teacher check-ins. But I do know a couple of other students who have that same thing, where on Wednesdays, they will have their online class on their off days and their in-person class at the same time. I also have, as a senior, not everything fit in my schedule the way it was supposed to. So I'm actually taking an online course through Brigham Young University externally. So my, I currently don't take a math class with the high school. I'm taking my calculus class with Brigham Young online, which is a self-paced course, and it'll show up on my transcript after I get grades from each half of that course. So I know seniors that have one of those. I don't know anyone else that's doing both of those, but it's kind of a unique situation.
Well, that's pretty exciting. It sounds, it's almost like a pre-college experience for you. So no, I appreciate you telling us your personal experience. It's sometimes hard for us. You know, I have high schoolers, but not everybody does, so not everyone here understands exactly what's happening at the high school. And the inverse is true for those of us who don't have elementary students, so I appreciate it. I would like to embarrass you for two seconds and congratulate you. We are proud at Winchester High School to have had 13 National Merit semifinalists, and you are one of them. So I'd like to congratulate you. We obviously, we obviously don't like to overvalue standardized tests, so I'm going to refrain from listing all the names of here. We obviously, we also do very well in standardized test, but we're very proud of the accomplishments of our students and very proud to have one of our own accomplish this. So we'll be excited to follow you along. So thank you again for coming. Any additional questions from the committee? No, seeing none. Thank you, and thank you for getting up early for us to come to the meeting when you could have slept in for another hour.
My pleasure. Thank you all for having me.
Take care.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move on to public comment. I will remind everyone that public comment is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on issues under the purview of the school committee. It's not a dialogue. It's not necessarily a question and answer session. We actually did hold office hours last Wednesday. That is more of a dialogue. That was a great experience, and I might talk about that a little bit at the end of public comment. But I'll remind members of the public that you have up to three minutes. You do not have to take all three minutes. We'll try to limit the time to a total of about 20 minutes for the public, but we, you know, we don't want to cut people off. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask, although seeing only one hand raised, I don't think we need to. Usually what I like to do is lower all the hands to give everybody an opportunity. But seeing only one hand raised at this point in time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Hertz. Wait, actually, I'll let you do this because the numbers, they're moving all around on me and I can't quite tell. So Ms. Bollinger, if you could tell me and elevate to speak.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a little hard on my Chromebook.
The order flipped, so I will just elevate Ms. Hertz first. So let's see. Hopefully that worked.
And if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Yep, so my name is Annette Hertz, and this is, I'm a first-time caller. So thank you for doing this, especially during this time. Just to give you a little bit of background on my side, I have the blessing or the curse, whichever you'd like to see it, of having one high school student, one junior high student, and one elementary school student during this COVID time. So I get to experience a little bit of each one of the, you know, different ways, again, of approaching the whole COVID situation. And I again applaud all the teachers and administrators for what they've done, as well as the parents for stepping up because this is definitely not easy. I, my only, I don't know how this normally works, but I would like to just throw in one question that I have for the school committee, the administration, et cetera, is specifically for the elementary schools. I have a third grader, and I've seen now just, you know, how after, what is it, two, three weeks that we've been in school, the approach that's now been taken for kindergarten through fifth graders, where our children go to school two days, obviously have Zoom, and then we have the choice boards. Now, I've also seen that the situation across the five schools, so far we've had one child that has had COVID. And I applaud again everybody for all the parameters they put in place so that we only have had one child. My question to the group is, as we progress, and say this is again two, three, four months down the line, if we continue to have lower cases specifically for the elementary school students, where it is extremely hard for these kids to learn remotely, and especially for parents with lots of little kids running around, what is the plan to get back to school, or is there a plan to get back to school? And related to that, what are the thresholds? What do we need to see to start feeling that, okay, yes, we're slowly going to start moving? Is it then slowly doing the Wednesday or slowly doing the Tuesday? I don't know. I'm just throwing these things out there. You can mute me now. Again, I don't know when you guys are discussing that, but I'd love to hear on that side.
Thank you very much. So we will not necessarily respond at this point in time, but I will just say that those are questions that we were pondering. And so you will not hear us directly respond right now. But thank you for your comment, and if you could elevate whoever's next.
Oh, dear. Oh, dear. Okay, I will elevate Tom, Mr. Hopcroft.
Mr. Hopcroft, if you take your name and address for the committee?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, very well.
Hi, my name is Tom Hopcroft, and I live with my wife Victoria and two young sons, one in elementary and one in middle school. We're at 99 Pond Street here in Winchester. We'd like to first thank you for the opportunity to address the committee and for the many hours that you've been spending to ensure that our children get the best possible education, as well as social and emotional support. We'd also like to thank all of the teachers for going above and beyond the call of duty to adapt and innovate in this new environment. So we're speaking today to express concern about the full remote schedule generally, and our bewilderment around why full remote students are on a cohort schedule. We understand the space constraints that dictate the cohort model for the hybrid students, but remote has different constraints, and it's nonsensical to apply a hybrid constraint to learners. The cohort model for remote effectively creates three entirely different class schedules, the Monday, Tuesday, the Wednesday, and the Thursday, Friday, over the course of a five-day week. While this might make sense in a hybrid setting where kids are in different physical locations on different days, it adds unnecessary complexity to a remote setting. Students benefit from structure, consistency, and predictability, all of which are lacking in this complicated scheduling model. Last week, we spoke with a well-regarded executive functioning coaching organization in Western Massachusetts about our son's middle school full remote schedule. These experts were shocked. They expressed how unusual his schedule was. And then oddly, they asked if by chance we lived in Winchester, noting that they had heard about this district. Once a leader in the state, Winchester schools are increasingly becoming an outlier when it comes to how we're handling the return to school and especially remote learning. There are plenty of examples in neighboring towns and across the nation of schedules that better foster education and attend the social, emotional wellbeing of our kids. Let's be clear, we are very happy with our teachers. We're not happy with the constraints that are being given that tip the scale of disadvantage to students in our town. What we're doing is contrary to what experts in the field recommend for children. And while this is challenging for so many kids who don't have identified vulnerabilities, it is especially challenging for those children who do have issues with executive functioning, anxiety, English as a second language, and other challenges. Expecting kids to be on screen so much and juggle all the emails and assignment lengths in Google classrooms while class times change almost every day, and expecting them to find their way back from breaks requires a stronger level of executive functioning skills than many have in K-12. It doesn't need to be this difficult. Few adults that I know would be successful amidst such chaos. So enough about what isn't working. Here's what needs to be fixed. And while it could be fixed within the current remote cohort model, it would be more straightforward to do away with cohorts altogether for the remote, full remote students altogether. First, core classes should be spread across at least four or five days per week for reinforced learning each day. Students should have consistent daily schedules most days as it reduces anxiety, stress, and other learning inhibitors. Total class time on a given day should not be too long, as our kids get burnt out after too many hours. Limit the number and duration of specials on any given day. Our first grader has two 45-minute specials back-to-back with no break in between them, so 90 minutes of specials in one block. Limit the duration of continuous screen time without a break. And finally, classes of 20 to 24 students, or whatever it were pre-pandemic, are just fine in a full remote, so long as we give the teachers the flexibility and autonomy to plan their classes as they deem best. Unlike hybrid, where there are space constraints, the size is not uniquely overwhelming in an online setting. The teachers have the option of putting students into breakout groups or go around and meet in one-on-ones as they would pre-pandemic if they choose. We need to be open to emerging best practices, and we need to be constantly looking around to benchmark and learn from others. There is now a burden, I believe, on the district to meet the case and explain why being an outlier in how we are organizing the full remote schedule is benefiting and not disadvantaging our students. With that, I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. I appreciate your comments. I see we have two more hands raised, ready to go.
Yes, elevating Ms. Hoffman, I believe.
Yes. Believe that would be Erica Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman, if you state your name and address, unless you're a different Erica for the committee.
In which case, my apologies.
Hi, Erica Hoffman, Devon family here.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Very well, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? You okay?
Yes, very well, thank you.
Um, thank you. I think one of the city's government members of their time and for attendance in town. I just really wanted to bring up a couple things, really. I feel like we should be moving forward with a plan with the district. And this, because of this, how the hybrid model is going at the moment, I feel like it's not sustainable for our family. We need a goal to work towards, and having this situation of unknowing this is very hard to sort of, to continue at this pace. And because at the moment, we sort of feel like it's going until June when school's finished. I also want to bring to your attention that certain districts, like North City, have already moved forward with different phases. They started off with like two-day hybrids, then they added an alternate Wednesday. And then they're now looking forward to adding a more day because, you know, they're looking at the COVID numbers and how they're good and there are many in school. Also, for the remote days, to try and minimize the screen time, they're actually sending home packets of work to do on the three remote days that they're home. So I stress that Winchester sort of looks towards this and helps sort of replicate this. I feel like there needs to be better communication from the school committee in the district, Winchester Public Schools, just on the goal and how they're moving forward and what they're working on, just to give parents an idea and feel. Because at the moment, I feel, you know, for us, from our perspective, it doesn't really look like they're moving forward to any particular goals. I also want to bring up that I have a good friend who lives in town and sends her two schools to Winchester Public Schools. And she's a fourth grade teacher and woman. She was terribly disappointed with the content of the Winchester Public Schools. Well, you know, we're going to do something similar to us, and they're having a two-day in-person, a Wednesday teach remote half-day. And then the other two days when they're home, they actually have a remote teacher teaching like 45-minute blocks of math, phonics, literacy. And they also get sent home a package with the children. And this, you know, obviously using this model, you're getting through a lot more content than just the two and a half days that Winchester is currently getting. I feel like the CDC prioritizes in-person learning for K through five. And I think Winchester Public Schools needs to look and maybe change the model and not do a one-five-four and look at the K through five and see if they can increase the number of in-person days. And whether that's doing five half-days with four kids there and sending them home so they don't have to eat lunch. And or whether, there was another suggestion on whether you send all the kids to school on Monday, Tuesday, AA cohort stays for the whole day, BD cohort goes home, then you don't get the situation of struggling to fit all the kids in for lunch. All the kids going to school on Wednesday, it's a half-day, the kids come home, and then the BD cohort goes to school full day on Thursday, Friday. The AA cohort goes home at 12:30, and then that would sort of avoid the lunch restrictions of six feet. So I just sort of stress that you start looking at ways to try and get the kids in school for more days. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hoffman. I see that we have one last hand raised.
I am elevating Ms. Barnett.
Stacy Barnett, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Hi, I'm Stacy Barnett on Stafford Road. Thank you, school committee members, for allowing me to voice my concerns. I am the mother of two high school students and the wife of one of the high school teachers. Today, I'm speaking on the safety, health concerns of my family and Winchester High School hybrid model. Before the school year started, the committee made it clear that Winchester had low positive COVID rate. That was true for the town, but in just two weeks into the school year, there were six positive cases identified in the hybrids high school student body. This puts 14- to 18-year-olds in a very high positive rate compared to the whole town. Yes, some are caught before the students started in-person learning, but some positive students have been in the building. I have seen in the health updates that there are closed contacts that are notified. But since desks are six feet away and class changes are less than 15 minutes, it appears that essentially, no one in the classroom is notified of quarantine because no one fits the strict definition of a closed contact. Recently, the CDC updated their guidelines, adding that infections can spread by particles that linger in the air for minutes to hours and may infect people further than six feet. Also, the CDC states that the virus can spread to people in the same space, the same time, or even spread after the person with COVID has left the space. Yes, the high school has a new ventilation system, but the classrooms are not negative pressure like hospital rooms. The air moves through the classroom before it reaches its ventilation. This means that students and teachers are in an enclosed classroom for 50 minutes when there is a sick positive case. If a student tests positive, the whole class is not notified or quarantined. When a sick high school student is in the school, they have sat in five different desks and changed classroom rooms five times that day, possibly exposing numerous students and staff to airborne particles that have escaped through their non-medical-grade masks. Wouldn't you want to be notified if you sat in a desk or an enclosed space for 50 minutes where someone who tested positive was also there for 50 minutes right there before for you? Since there are five class changes that day, a sick positive student might possibly ten students have sat at the same desk after that student sat there, not to mention the numerous students in the enclosed classroom. There is a reason why the CDC states that exposed areas need to close for 24 hours and disaffected by appropriate staff. I would like to ask the school committee, please update its notification policy when a positive in-school case is identified. All classmates and staff should be notified of possible exposure because they shared an enclosed classroom or desk with a person who tested positive, not just those who were three more than, for more than 15 minutes. Also, please make it clear regarding how many positive cases need to be identified in a particular school committee, community, before that school switches to distance learning. Taking these steps will go a long, long way to promote a better peace of mind and a more secure learning environment for student, teachers, and parents alike. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will take one, we have one last public comment, and this will be the last one, and then.
I am elevating Ms. DeLeo.
Ms. DeLeo, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Hello, Brian, and fellow school committee members.
Good morning.
This is Susan DeLeo. Hold on. Sorry about that. 24th half drive. I'm calling this morning to, I guess, support Ms. Hoffman's comments as well as state that our family's really struggling, along with many other families with the remote days, especially my first grade students, of which I have two. I would like to state that I also agree that we need metrics for returning to as many in-person days as possible. We need to know what the plan is that the Winchester Public Schools has for getting these very, they're supposed to be prioritized under Desi, to get them in as many days as possible. These little ones are really struggling with the remote days. And then additionally, I sent an email, I know to Karen, Brian, and to Dr. Evans, but to everyone. The choice board days, so my children are AA cohort, so Thursday, Friday days, it's just way too much screen time. Every single option for the choice board involves being on the computer. I'd like to see Winchester for schools send home as part of their curriculum, actual paperwork for the children to do. The dexterity of these young children just working off the computer is not, is not going to be where it needs to be going forward in grades, hopefully, when we return to normal schooling. They're not really using pencil or crayons as much as they need to be. I don't understand why the school district cannot send home a workbook for literacy and for math and request that the students do, you know, whatever appropriate amount of work is out of those workbooks on the days off. Many other school districts are handling the remote days in this fashion. And then finally, I think going towards a, speaking to the metrics of moving forward and having a plan to get the students back into school as much as possible, I think that is unrealistic to be waiting for a vaccine. We need to come up with a plan to implement. We need to come up with a plan to implement and to slowly move forward to as many days as possible. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
I just take the point of admission before we lose.
Thank you. Ms. DeLeo, if you would stay here for a second, Mr. Nixon.
Ms. DeLeo, I think you said you shared an email with the chair and vice chair and everyone. I was just looking while you were talking. My last email from you is on August 5th. So if you intended that to go to the school committee, you might consider forwarding that directly to the other members. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeLeo. And with that, we will close public comments. Before we move, I want to thank you all for coming this morning. I know everybody has things that they need to be doing and I appreciate that you had, we have an opportunity to hear from some of the public. I do want to acknowledge that a number of teachers reached out to us and were unable to come, obviously, because the timing of our meeting is at 9:30 this morning. We have our meetings historically, over the past several years, have been alternating in the morning and the evening. This allows people to, who have different schedules, be able to come to at least one meeting a month. It also allows our central office staff, who work from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., if conservatively, to be able to actually see their family in the evening. So I appreciate and honestly feel badly that a number of our educators were unable to come and tune in. I will ask WinCam if they can get this broadcast up as soon as humanly possible after the meeting. So, and I just got a big thumbs up in the other room. So the other thing I want to quickly state on the long lines of public comment, because I think it's important, is that we did hold our first office hours of the fall on Wednesday. We had, I believe it was three members of the public come in to, we actually invited them in and had a two-way conversation. Really, it was all-way conversation. And then there were probably five or six additional members of the public who sat in the audience and chose not to participate, but were able to hear everything that we said. It was a good conversation. It was, it probably was not all sides of every issue because it was a couple of people who tended to have similar perspective, but what we heard, and I just want to add it into the sort of the public comment because I said I would bring it back. What we heard was two things in particular. One was their perspective of a lack of cohesion of the choice boards and how it related to the curriculum. And the other was something we heard this morning was they're looking for a plan for return to school. And so I bring those back to the committee as a whole so that you can sort of have a perspective of what was discussed in those meetings. And with that, I will end public comment and move on to reports and discussions items. The first item is the Winchester Health Department Board of Health update. For that, we will need to elevate Ms. Murphy and Dr. Bhatari, if they are here. So let me...
Oh, excuse me.
We should be, both be able to do it, but I'm not.
I found one.
I see Dr. Bhatari, so I'll promote her to panelist. And if we can find, if you see, I see her. I will promote Ms. Murphy.
Have you got her?
Yep.
Okay.
So they should both be promoted to panelists. Yes, Dr. Bhatari and Ms. Murphy. Good morning. So can you both hear us? Ms. Murphy, Dr. Bhatari.
Looks like Dr. Bhatari's on mute. Jim Murphy is not.
Dr. Bhatari.
Hi, how are you? Sorry about that.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you?
Hold on, my headphones weren't working, so.
Quite all right. I appreciate your coming to our meeting. Ms. Murphy, thank you again also for coming. This is a, you know, a regular engagement we have every two to three weeks where we invite you to give us an update on the numbers, to allow you to ask us questions, allow us to ask you some questions. And I really appreciate your coming in this morning. So is Ms. Whitaker, were you expecting her this morning or is it just the two of you?
I don't know, Jen, were we?
We can't hear you, Ms. Murphy.
I think it was just the two of us. Can you hear me?
Oh, you have a cellphone that needs to be elevated as well, Ms. Murphy? Ah, thank you.
Uh, do we have a number?
Three calling listeners. Are you 3025? Okay. More.
Can we elevate this?
I don't see a way to elevate the telephone number.
Um, hmm. Well, that is odd. Oh, allowed to talk. How about that?
Okay.
Did that work?
We should be, if you...
Did she try?
Could you test out your...
How is that?
Yes, now we hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So my apologies, you know, we're all still getting our ways through this hybrid model of meetings as well. So I will turn it over to you guys if you would like to give a sort of a discussion on where the numbers are in Winchester, where they are in our schools, and anything you'd like to let us know.
Yeah, sure. So I think what would be best if I could turn everyone's attention to our dashboard, would I be able to share that screen?
If we allow you screen sharing, you would be able to. So we should be able, no. If you go to on the bottom, share screen.
If I can do it if you want me to, I'll hit it up.
Only has all panelists.
Mr. Nixon will share, will share that screen.
Okay.
How's this work?
I just, I had her share panelists, or, yes.
I'm not sure who's running that, but we seem to see it.
That's me.
Okay.
I think I did that.
We're, yeah.
Okay.
Jen just needs to tell me where to go and where to scroll.
Yeah, sure. So if we just stay at the top for a minute, I just want to review our dashboard. That is our daily publication of where we stand in terms of positive case counts. And we update this daily at 4:00 p.m. We select it at 4:00 p.m. just to be consistent and the public can have an expectation of when that update will occur. And just to remind people how we get our positive cases, it does come from the State Department of Public Health. We can get a positive notification at any minute of any day. And so the first chart here applies to Winchester residents. And currently, we have seven active confirmed cases. And I definitely want to remind people that a confirmed case is based off of PCR analysis. PCR is the gold standard testing right now. It's the most accurate out there. There is a test out there called an antigen test. However, that data is not captured here. That test is not as accurate. And those are actually called probable cases. So confirmed case is PCR analysis. And then active confirmed case refers to a person who has tested positive on a PCR test, who is currently infectious and isolating. And the, some of these terms, I understand, are complex and I'll get to that in a minute because we've created a document that will hopefully answer and define some of these terms that you, that you hear quite often. In terms of active confirmed cases, we have seven. And those folks are isolating away from others and hopefully away from others, even within their own homes, to the extent that they can. And so the total case count to this date for the community is at 145. And you can scroll down to the next table, please. So for the school district, overall, we've had seven total confirmed cases to date. And this includes, so far, this is just students. However, this chart will apply to, as the notation says there, in-person students, teachers, and staff. And currently, we have three active confirmed cases within the whole school system. And we have written that down by building. Not many towns produce this level of detail, I must say. I haven't found one yet that does. People are somewhat conservative in what they share, just in terms of privacy and so forth. But this is exactly what we will be sharing. This is the extent of it, our active case count and total case count. And when someone recovers, it means they're off-isolation, they are not infectious any longer, and they can resume daily activities. And that is something that is defined by the Health Department. Chris, you can scroll down a little bit more. We added a chart just to show the trend of our cases. There we go. So you'll see cumulative case count on the orange line over time since March, which the state started reporting positive cases to us. And the blue line will be our confirmed cases by month for the town. Now, starting at the end of October, we hope to add a third data trend line, which would be where we plot school-specific case counts by month. So it's just another way to visualize the data and what's occurring. Chris, if you can scroll to the top. Over on the left-hand side, there's a button, Frequently Asked Questions. And this is just new as of yesterday because we did receive, as well as, you know, many school staff received a lot of questions about what the close contact, how is it defined? What's, you know, what's an infectious period? How is that defined? So here you'll find those questions that we've received thus far, as well as the answers. And we are actually going to add a few more that have become relevant lately. But if you don't see a specific answer to a question you have, there is a form at the top that has a link to submit a question. And I really encourage people to use that. So it's sort of, it's all funneled into one spot and we can, we can go to one particular area and address those questions as they come in. So there's that. And then, and we have a school-related section as well, specifically to questions in the school setting that we have received. So I encourage everybody to look here first if you have a question. If you don't see it addressed, please do submit it to us. But I hope that you do find a lot of what is needed here. If you'd like, if anyone has any questions about the dashboard specifically, I'm happy to answer it. Otherwise, I do want to just touch on a few, few more things about what's going on with our cases.
Does the committee have any questions regarding the dashboard? Ms. Boloniers?
I just had a question about the, I don't know if you want to scroll back to the top. So the very top of the page about the positive, active positive cases, I think it was. It wasn't on the, it wasn't on the FAQs. It was on the dashboard. So the total active confirmed cases is at seven here. And then under the, this Winchester school district, we have total confirmed cases and four recovered cases. So are these, are the total seven active cases community-wide? I guess is my question, as opposed to in the schools.
So the seven cases that you're, the seven cases that you're referring to at the top under active?
Right.
Those are active and currently infectious.
Okay.
Three of those seven pertain to the schools. You say the column three, active, right? So three of the, so just remember the terms active, currently infectious, recovered, no longer infection.
Right.
And then total, just to give you all our cases to date.
Okay.
It's just a coincidence that there's a seven on the top and a seven on the bottom and it draws your eyes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there additional questions from the committee regarding the dashboard? And Ms. Bergstrom, because you're small up there, if you do have questions or comments, please feel free to just unmute yourself and yell them out because sometimes I can't see if you raised your hand. So I do, oh, Ms. Nixon.
I have a question I might raise now. I don't have to raise it now, but maybe it's appropriate. You know, we've had some discussion at the meeting on September 15. And then you and I, Mr. Chairman, we joined the Board of Health at a recent meeting and we talked about this notion of a communications plan or communications protocol, that's something very, very short and sweet. I think Dr. Bhatari has suggested it maybe as much as just three or four sentences, but this illustrates what information is publicly shareable, but also acknowledges what kind of information is not publicly shareable. And I think there had been some suggestion among members of the Board of Health that that might even go on the dashboard as well. And I certainly appreciate, there's a lot of new information here, which is terrific. I mean, under FAQ, I don't know if that's there exactly. I remain, I remain believing that that would be very helpful. I noticed in our, the recent announcement, we had an infection at the Lincoln School. And so the press jumped on that, you know, online. And the first line was, "A call was placed to the superintendent and not immediately returned." And so I'm just trying to sort of acknowledge that anytime you have an infection, people are looking for information and ways that we can be clear about what we will and won't share, I think just helps us all be high-functioning. And that could either be something that is on this dashboard, it could be on the Winchester Schools website. So I wanted to just ask kind of where we stand with that, whether or not that actually winds up on the dashboard. And we can come back to that later if Jen Murphy wants to touch on that later in the presentation.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you suggesting that what part of the FAQ be a, and maybe it is here. I've not actually seen all the FAQ yet until just now, would be what, what is considered public information? And maybe that's there. And if it was, I mean, as simple as one of the FAQs, what are we allowed to reveal about positive cases in town? I mean...
I feel like where it goes, maybe it's too weedy for me to suggest. I just like the, I think it was Dr. Bhatari who suggested that might even go on their website somewhere or somewhere on the dashboard. But I defer to, defer to these two about where that would be most appropriate. I think I'm just really interested in wherever it would be really visible.
Okay.
So that with Dr. Evans, you know, we hope it doesn't happen again, but I guess statistically, there's a likelihood, right? We get another infection. If Dr. Evans sends out a message that, you know, with the information she feels is important to share, there could almost be a link to this amazing website that the Board of Health continues to develop, right? And there could be a link that says, "For additional information, visit this page." So a parent who has questions could go there, understand what they can and cannot expect to hear, but then in addition, see this wealth of information that's just been put up, which is really helpful.
Ms. Murphy or Dr. Bhatari, do you have any, any response or thoughts about that? Or Dr. Evans?
I can just quickly weigh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. I was just gonna quickly.
Dr. Bhatari.
I'll just quickly weigh in. Yes, I totally understand what Chris and Jen, Brian and I have all discussed regarding a communication protocol, putting it up there. But from what, and we, I think that's a great suggestion. We can just put it into the FAQs, you know, one thing. But basically, what it's going to be, Chris, is what's on the dashboard is what's relatable to the public. And just so everybody knows that's even listening to the meeting, we, number one, as a state, relay way more information than any other state. The governor made an announcement of that a few days ago. That's what standard, standards is here. And we are relaying like way more information than the standard. That being said, I still believe it's, education is power and I think it's nice for the town and this, you know, society and all the citizens to know what's going on. But let's just add maybe that FAQ, you know, this is what's available to you guys and it is on the dashboard. But to move forward a little bit past the communication protocol, there's so much talk that goes on and I think that we should sort of mind, we'll put it up there, but the stats are the stats. And Jen has done such an amazing job, like unbelievable, over and above. Sorry to give you so many kudos, Jen, but just with the amount of information that she's sharing and the dashboard and the details of it, obviously with Kathy as well. And I do think we should move back to, not that I'm on the school committee, but push to give the people metrics, getting back to school in a normal way that's safe, to sort of discuss both those, both those concerns of the public comment rather than the details about the communication protocol. Sorry to just...
Thank you, Dr. Bhatari.
Can I just tag on?
Yes, Ms. Murphy.
Just to tag on to that, I did mention that there are several more questions we're going to add on to the FAQ and it directly gets to the heart of what we will share, what we won't, and why. And I think that may be very helpful for people to understand why, why we are not sharing, mostly why we're not sharing certain pieces of information.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
And that'll be forthcoming very shortly.
So I had a question about the dashboard in particular, well, and how it relates to our recent number of positives. I know that you don't report the number of tests done. But if we look at the weekly reports put out by the state, they list the number of tests in the previous two-week period. And I've looked back at them and seen that we've had more and more tests done. So essentially, looking at our percent positive, is that something that we want to be tracking? I'm simply throwing this out there. Is that something that we want to be tracking? Either the number of tests or the percent? Either the number of tests or the percent positive?
Right.
Because I think without that, the context is hard, because we do see June, July, August, September, we've seen a low but steady increase. But we've also seen a commensurate increase in the number of tests, having done that effort myself. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the state, every two, every week will put out town-specific positivity rates. And so you can go onto the DPH dashboard. And so are you suggesting, Brian, that we actually extract that information to highlight it here or put a link here?
I think my question was, you are the public health expert, is that something that provides context that you think is valuable?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it something that is a red herring? More people getting tested is because we have more sick people? Or more people getting tested means, what does it mean? I don't know what if it means something valuable, so therefore maybe you don't want to put it there. I don't know.
No, I definitely think there is value in it, especially, well, it could work either way, but there's insight to be drawn from it. One, if, it's always going to tell you something about the transmission rate, especially if you, if you have decent amount of testing and your number comes up higher, it's gonna tell you a likelihood of greater transmission. If you have a lower percentage of testing, you know, that's problematic, but still it's telling you, look, you need, you clearly need more testing, which is another discussion in and of itself. However, it's still telling you something about what's going on in your community, that you need more testing, or you have a greater likelihood of transmission going on. So, you know what, I actually have a PowerPoint of the table you are referencing. Is there any way I can share that?
You should be able, you should be able to share it right now, I believe, because I think all participants should have sharing rights.
Ms. Murphy?
Yeah? Oh, no, yeah.
That's okay. As you share that, could you also talk about, you know, when we first met early on this fall, you had said that you would pull out nursing home data because that wouldn't be relevant to the town as a whole, because it's a unique sort of ecosystem. So if we're talking about a percent positivity rate, is there also value in schools as a unique ecosystem? And as Ms. Bynett suggested, looking at the percent positivity rate just sort of among our high school ecosystem, which I would relate to similar to like a nursing home ecosystem, like our town percent positivity rate may not be as high, but it may also inform us about the ecosystem of our schools.
So that would be a great idea. I have to tell you the limitations of my ability to get data. So this table you're looking at is taken from the state data that they produce. And they are the only ones who have knowledge about how many tests are actually conducted on Winchester residents. I don't get that total number. So I cannot calculate a positivity rate from just the school community, unfortunately.
So you wouldn't be able to pull out nursing home data from that either, per se? This percent positivity rate is meant of reflect?
No, but it could. So for example, the school data on the dashboard will not include, obviously, nursing home data. I can manually pull out those cases. I can also do that for the resident table, but I do feel like there's value in having it in the resident table, right? They're part of our, part of our community. But certainly, they will not be counted as part of the school table.
Right, but for the percent positivity rate, we're all in together no matter what.
Right, so I could find, well, let me, let me find out if I, if there's a way I can calculate that, I will look into it myself.
Okay, thank you.
So I see that you're sharing your slides. I can see it on Zoom, but I'm not sure if it's being broadcast over, I'm not sure if it's being broadcast over WinCam, but.
But either way, Jen, the DESI guidelines are based on the percent positivity for the town, correct?
The DESI got, the, oh, sorry, so the shaded portion, you mean, of the chart where it tells you when you need to flip to full remote or not?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is based on, that's based on the incidence rate, actually.
Okay.
The incidence rate, not the positivity rate.
Okay, right, but they're not pulling out specific data, so either way, we're gonna have that same data for the recommendations for back to school.
Correct, correct. From the state, correct, yep.
Right.
And so I just, you touched on nursing homes, I just wanted to let everyone know as a community, we haven't had a case inside of a nursing home since June, so this is good. I do want to just, if I could briefly talk about, you know, symptoms in our cases, because this is, as we enter cold and flu season, this is becoming more relevant. Overall, 80% of our cases historically have displayed some type of symptom. And while there are commonalities amongst cases, there are also differences that we see at the outset of a case. And so just to let you know, some of our cases may start out as cold blinks, they may start out with severe headaches, they may start out with vomiting and diarrhea only, they may start out with things out. So in other words, what I'm trying to convey is, you don't know how one case will present itself. It's not always the same. And so while they may develop all common symptoms amongst cases, you know, you really need to be mindful about what your symptoms are and take it seriously. And I just say this because, you know, the symptom checker, hopefully the school community is looking at the symptom checker that's put out by the schools and really taking note of what they're experiencing. And perhaps if they feel like it's COVID-like, they may choose to go get a test. There are still free testing sites. If you go to MA, Stop the Spread, you will see a list of those testing sites, they're fast, they're efficient, and they're free for now, as long as the governor holds them open, which I'm hopeful he'll do beyond October, because I think it's very important as, again, as we start to get into the cold and flu season. And that might be my segue to remind everybody to get a flu shot, right? And we are doing that in the school system, as I mentioned that as well. So we will, we will hopefully alleviate respiratory illness by getting our flu vaccine. But again, I think so that we're not bringing potential COVID into the school setting. If you are experiencing symptoms, again, consider getting a test.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Now we see your slide.
I grabbed it and threw it up in case Ms. Murphy just wanted to take a moment and go back. I think you're right, I don't think anybody watching online could see this.
Okay.
If we want to take a moment.
So Ms. Murphy, your slides are up now, if you want to talk about them, but I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
No, was this shared as well? This is what the slide were, the percent positivity rate?
Yeah.
Okay, you saw that.
This is Chris, I just grabbed what you had up there, because it seemed like nobody else could see it.
Okay, so, so no, no, my question, and I think you answered it well, was just that whether there's information to, worth putting something on the chart there. And I'm not suggesting that there is or there isn't, but on the, excuse me, on the dashboard. But if you believe there is something valuable, I just, I'm curious if, in the context, if we go from six to six to eight to 12, that looks like a pretty continuous increase. Is there any context of that, you know, it's staying flat or going down, but based on, you know, that chart right there, we see that from June, you know, we've sort of bottomed out in June and July, and, you know, it's a gentle trend upward, which is obviously not something we want to see. But if we've had twice as many tests during that time period, it's up to you. I just want to make sure the context is there.
Can I offer two things?
Yeah.
No, I was gonna say, I do think, I appreciate the chair's question, and I think it, I think it could be very valuable information from many different perspectives, but I also realize it's a chunk of work. On the other hand, you know, this is not a daily or weekly chart, this is by month. And so I think it would be helpful, but it is, it's an extra layer of work. I wanted to just clarify, so these are, these are literally from June 1st to June 30th, is that, is that right, Jennifer? And so like.
Yeah, Chris, it's very hard to hear you, Chris, I'm so sorry. Is anybody else experimenting?
So would we, I'll try it again, can you hear me better? I wonder if I have a bad mic.
Pull the mic closer to.
Do you want to grab that one? Hold on, I may have a bad mic. How's that, is that better?
Ms. Murphy, can you hear?
I mean, it's okay, I'll try.
Okay. So no, I just, I just wanted to clarify, these are literally just monthly cumulative totals, so we would not, we would not expect to see an update in this chart until, you know, maybe a week into November? I hadn't actually asked that question. I mean, you said you're relying on information from the state, so like, when might one?
No, no, this chart, this chart is just our local data. I have this, and I will be updating it monthly, correct?
Okay, very good. But maybe in the first week of November is when we'd expect to see a change, because it's just a monthly picture.
Correct, correct. The information regarding the state has to do with the positivity rate, because I don't have access to, of the people tested in Winchester, how many of those are from school, in-person school setting versus not. I don't have access to that to be able to essentially calculate that, and I don't know if I can get that quite honestly, but I will ask.
Gotcha, that makes sense. Are there additional questions from the committee? Or Ms. Murphy, Dr. Batari, did you have additional things you wanted to add? I see Mr. Nixon actually just raised his hand with a question, but I know we sort of cut you off, because we were gonna ask you questions about the website, and you said then you had more to talk about, and then we sort of talked there, and you never got to what you were gonna say afterwards, or unless it got added in at some point.
The only other thing I'll add is we will have, we will be publishing a flow chart, which will hopefully, it'll just be a display of for parents to follow, you know, if you have symptoms, yes, no, if this, then that. It'll be a nice visual, hopefully through less wordy, very easy to follow, what to do and what. And so that should be forthcoming over either today or tomorrow. We hope to get that out there, and I'm hoping that it's useful for parents and others in the community.
Thank you very much, that does sound very useful. I'll return to the committee, any questions or comments? Mr. Nixon?
So I, if it's not inappropriate now, I want to loop back to the comment Dr. Batari made. So I want to remind the committee, and we talked about this at our meeting on September 15th, that this invitation to have these folks with us today every two or three weeks is really to accomplish three things, is to review and understand our current COVID data, which they're doing in more and more detail each time, which is terrific. We were also seeking to discuss a representative demographic area for ongoing monitoring, you know, might that just be Winchester or Winchester Plus? And we kind of hit that out of the park early on, so that's, that's complete. And then the third item was to discuss key metrics and threshold values, which will trigger a change in the district's operating model, specifically whether to a more or less restrictive one. And so I think, again, just to thank them, at our meeting on September 15th, excuse me, we got, and this is updated September 8th, some terrific, it's sort of like a flow chart, if you will, some scenarios, key health department indicators, and then considerations for Dr. Evans. And so this is a great example of, you know, the metrics and triggers towards a more restrictive operating model. And so what I wanted to acknowledge then was the second piece that Dr. Batari mentioned, and frankly, I feel like we got a couple of questions about this in public comment. I think this is an important question for us to keep on the table as we meet with our representatives from public health, because as Dr. Evans has said, and we all agree, at some point, we want to get our kids back in school when it's safe and appropriate to do so. So I'm gonna try to choose my words here really carefully and just ask that people listen to what I'm saying, but also what I'm not saying, is if we can acknowledge that getting our kids back in school when it is safe and appropriate to do so is a massive change in the operating model, and it's certainly one I'd like to see eventually, that is at one end of the spectrum, which is very different than what we're doing today. And while I think we all share this aspirational goal of getting kids back in school at some point, we are, to one of the comments during public comment, you know, we as the school committee have a responsibility in terms of discussion and communication with the administration and with our public health representatives. We need to keep talking about what, what, not necessarily what does that look like, because there continue to be so many unknowns, but what might that look like? And if we're unable now to say what we will do, it still may be helpful to our community to at least say what we won't do. And so what I wanted to do, just to throw out two, I have two very, I have two anecdotes. One is very, very granular, and one is, is very sort of high altitude. As I shared, well, here for instance, if we continue to operate for six weeks, or eight or 10, with no more COVID cases at the elementary level, does that suggest a change in the operating model? So here's a granular question. We have tents that have been erected, and Dr. Evans has shared the photos with us, and we know that they're expensive. They don't have enclosures, they don't have walls, they're not heated. Do we need to be using tents in the heating season? Do we need tents in January and February? And if so, do we need to enclose them, do we need to heat them? That's, that's a budget issue for us. We are today running a district with a budget that was developed back in November and December, and we voted in January before any of this was on our radar. Or if we, if we don't need those because of a lack of infection, that's an example where a very kind of granular operating piece might be able to come off the table. As I said, that, that's a very sort of granular example, but there are cost implications for that. And of course, people are assembling under those tents. But then, to back to my comment on September 15th, the really big picture, if tomorrow's, now here we are, it's Tuesday, if tomorrow's front page news was the discovery of an effective vaccine, we would not be opening up school five days a week on Thursday, certainly, because no vaccine is here, no vaccine is available. So when we think about vaccines that have to be produced at scale, I was reminded by someone last week, the front-running candidates all require two doses, two or more weeks apart. One assumes that once vaccines are available at scale, there will be a priority. We think first of nursing homes or essential employees. In my mind, I begin to sort of think of a pecking order, and I think about how students are, in the aggregate, relatively low risk, and does that not mean, again, at a sort of macro public health level, is it or is it not a reasonable assumption that students would somehow be low on the pecking order? If that's the case, can we start having conversations at this table that we share with our parent and teacher and staff community that acknowledges a discovery of a vaccine tomorrow does not mean we're opening up school or we're returning to normal anytime soon? And might there even be a straw poll at some point that seeks to understand how confident we are that we may in fact be running this model today for the entire school year? If our return to normal, if you will, in-person, five days a week, does not come until next fall, then this school committee, I think, needs to focus just laser tight with the superintendent and Ms. Whittmore on our budget and looking at how we're encumbering funds, and to be sure that we're not gonna run out of money before the end of the year. And both Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittmore have been great in sharing with us some of the federal grants and resources that have been made available that we are using for some important first costs, I want to acknowledge that. There have been other sources of funding. But we're spending money in a very different way today than we have ever before, and we're spending money very differently than we had ever anticipated. And so I just want to be sure that we're mindful of this, and we're thinking about it, and we just continue to have these, these conversations. I think these are very, I may not have the specific question, but I just want to be clear, when a parent calls into the school committee, an elementary parent, and says, "If we get no more infection, when can we start changing the elementary model?", I really respect the question. And I don't mean to say that I agree with the parent that we should change it, I'm literally saying I think that's a fair question, and I think we should be clear with our community how we're considering that question and working with our public health folks. And that frankly, today's public comment was a perfect example of why we made that motion in the back-to-school plan, was that we would at least have conversations about both restricting the model and then sort of loosening the model. So that's quite a speech, but I'm eager to hear from our public health folks sort of what they think about this, and then from you as the chair.
I'll follow what Mr. Nixon said first, to make sure that.
Ms. Bergstrom.
They also. I think Mr. Nixon brings up a good point in terms of budget, not only for things like tents and the hybrid model, but also for our investment in those remote days that our students are experiencing and the remote learning experiences, and that there may be some additional budget items that we would need or have to consider for going to, intend as a committee to follow through with a hybrid model for an entire school year versus thinking that this would be, that would only last for a couple of months. And so I think that these are all important issues, but I would also like to refer back to the chair, a point of order that we don't have on our agenda today, a discussion about full return to school. And I would. discussion about full return to school. And I would think that if we are going to discuss a full return to school as a committee, that that would need to be an agenda item that would be publicly noticed in the community as well.
That is noted. I would allow the discussion, because this is an update from the Winchester Health Department Board of Health update, and these are the, the-
Is it updated on-
These are specified as why-
I think a lot of people were commenting on it, so I think it's nice to at least refresh the public comment. I mean, there was a lot of people that called in, and they really want a return to school. So I, I think that it's the duty of the school to make, to school committee, to at least address their concerns. Whether you vote on it or not, you know, that's a political discussion, and that's obviously up to you guys and the superintendent. But it's nice to address people's concern about the return to school, because that's what they care about, you know?
Thank you, Dr. Bhutari. I guess what I was going to say, Ms. Bergstrom, was that in our return-to-school plan, we specified that we were inviting the Health Department and the Board of Health to come to give us updates every three weeks, and this is part of the topic. Certainly, there's no action item here. This is something I feel it's fair that we can discuss based on how it was posted. I would not allow any votes or action, even straw votes on any of this, but I think it's a fair question if Ms. Murphy or Dr. Bhutari or Dr. Evans want to discuss it. And if they have nothing to add at this point in time, I also think it's fair to, to not. I'm, they are under no constraints to respond to any questions or comments we have. We're just, so I think it's a fair question if there's anything that you want to add, Ms. Murphy or Dr. Bhutari.
Just, just to respond to Ms. Bergstrom, I totally understand that it's not on the agenda, so I, I do respect that as well. So, but just to go back to what Chris, Mr. Nixon said about the vaccine, I think that should be kind of off the table at this point, the discussion, even though it can happen at some point. I don't, I don't envision, you know, that's a practical situation for this year's school committee. But that being said, I really don't have anything to do with any budgetary items, and I don't have any knowledge of it, or it's not my bailiwick. So I would just venture to not necessarily talk about the vaccine being involved at, at this point, because I don't think it's going to make or break anybody's decisions. But that being said, based on the public comment, like I said, I do believe that given the cases, I mean, it's not necessarily my opinion, but the case count in Winchester and the incidence rates, they do at least warrant the school committee to further discuss some type of phased-in approach, especially for the elementary. Not talking about remote, actually, I completely understand Ms. Bergstrom's, again, I don't have anything to do with budgetary items, but for remote learning, that clearly seems to be an issue, not my, not my field. But, but as far as the hybrid and the people's concerns, and mental health concern for kids, and, you know, the trickiness of the schedules, and, you know, what the CDC recommends, and what DESI recommends, is three feet per education social distancing, especially in consideration of K-5. So I think we need to consider that DESI, along with the CDC's recommendation for a phased-in elementary approach, based on the Department of Public Health and what people are recommending, considering safety guidelines.
Thank you, Dr. Bhutari. Ms. Murphy or Dr. Evans, do you, Ms. Murphy, thank you. Again, Ms. Bergstrom is correct, while not on our agenda. We have the Health Department update, Board of Health update, and that is specifically why, one of the three specific reasons we've invited you here is to have these discussions, which doesn't mean that it has to happen today, but if you have anything that you'd like to add or any thoughts, we certainly welcome them at this table.
I just wanted to add that while I can appreciate the desire for a lot of parents to have their kids go fully in person, I do just want to remind everybody that this is, this is something novel. This is, this is something new. In the spring, we shut down schools very quickly before the virus could really take hold amongst the school system, right? Now, it's almost like an experiment that we don't know how it's going to play out. So I would just caution a couple things. We don't have data yet on how the upcoming fall, late fall/winter, where you have prolonged indoor periods of time in the community, right, amongst everybody, as well as the cold and flu season, and, and other illnesses, common illnesses that we see yearly coming down the pipe. So we, there are a lot of factors there, here, that have yet to play out. How are, how are all of our safeguards going to play against all of them? How are the masks going to work as a safeguard against all of those factors? So I really feel like, and I have the luxury of saying this, right, from the public health perspective. So here is my public health perspective, is that I don't have the data yet to be able to say whether going full occupancy in school at this point is a really good idea. I really cannot say that. I just caution us to keep the, those things in mind, that the jury is still out at this point, and we really haven't put it to the test.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Ms. Murphy, can I ask real quick, Brian?
Yes, Ms. Bergstrom, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Evans.
Ms. Murphy, when we, if we would move from six feet to three feet, wouldn't that completely change the Department of Health's contact tracing for the schools?
It absolutely would, yes, it would. Yes, so we would have one more close contact identified, we have more kids out of school under quarantine, and staff under quarantine, yes, that is how that would play out.
Thank you. Dr. Evans?
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize a couple of important points. One is that we have a very close working relationship with the public health personnel, and they're doing an extraordinary job with contact tracing, with communicating. Many, many of our conversations are late at night or on the weekend. They are on the job and doing an excellent job with their contact tracing. And also, wanted to emphasize that Jen Murphy and I jointly produce the communications that go home to families and staff members, that every communication I draft it, and then Jen edits, and Jen Markham, our nurse leader, edits, and we make sure that we are accurate and complete. So nothing has gone home on any front that hasn't been fully vetted jointly, and I think that should give everyone confidence that we have a very effective communication procedure, and that we're working well together. In terms of full return to school, nothing would make me happier than to go back to full return to school when it is safe to do so. And I think I agree with Jen Murphy on this one, that right now we need more data. We've only been in school for a few weeks. However, we need to be working towards that, because it's going to take a lot of planning, coordination, and resources. It's going to be significantly more costly to return partway through the year than it actually would be for us to stay in our current configuration, primarily because of personnel issues that will be very difficult to resolve, particularly with our four represented groups. A number of our employees are not able to work except fully remotely, and so it is, it is a big challenge. That means that we need to put a lot of planning into it. I think the best group to take this on is our District COVID Planning and Implementation Team we're going to meet shortly. We'll continue to meet regularly over the next couple of months, and vet all of the issues. And there are representatives on that team from the parent community, the medical community, from our teachers, administrators. It's a large committee of 25 people, so we will work with that group. In addition, Dr. Booby, the, one of the medical professionals who's a parent, is working in an informal way with a, an advisory of a number of Winchester physicians and nurse practitioners and scientists to investigate things like rapid testing, availability, and resources, et cetera, more information about the vaccine. I think the thing that's really important to note about the vaccine, and I agree with Dr. Bhutari on this one, waiting for a vaccine to be fully in place and all of our folks to be vaccinated would mean probably another full year of disrupted education. But I think it's also important to note that none of the vaccines that I've seen in the studies, the human studies, have involved children, therefore, we're likely at least a full year away from any of our students being vaccinated. And that is something that teachers and support staff and administrators obviously would be concerned about, adults, but also children. And so I think it's important not to be overly optimistic by public reports that a vaccine is coming around the corner in a month or two, but to recognize that none of those vaccines are tested on children for good reason, and that it's going to likely be a long time before children have vaccines. And so putting all that on the table, I think, we need to diminish the expectation that we're going to be returning shortly, quickly, within weeks or months. It's very likely, if there is a return, it won't be phased for many months, would be my expectation. So I just want to be direct about that. There are a lot of issues that complicate the return and make it challenging. We will return at some point. We want to be sure that we're safe to do so, and that we're not immediately closing down because of transmission, because we have too many people in our classrooms, and they have too many close contacts. So, so I just want to thank Jen Murphy and the Board of Health for just doing an outstanding job being responsive. The fact that they're willing to come and meet with the school committee every few weeks, that they created the data dashboard, that they're so responsive. Anytime I pick up the phone and have a question or a conversation, I also want to commend our nurses, particularly Jen Markham, our nurse leader, for working closely with the board and with the Public Health Department to protect everyone's health. And they've been incredibly proactive. Parents should have seen many publications coming from them that are written jointly by our nurses and by Jen Murphy, and I think those are all really helpful and reassuring. And we have a lot of very supportive community members who are also helping us with this effort. So I feel proud of what Winchester has done to address this pandemic, and I think we're in good shape to start planning for our return, but it's going to be a slow process.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Mr. Nixon?
So a couple, a couple of quick thoughts, because one, one of these comes up later on the agenda. We have a presentation and recommendation on transportation, so I just want to acknowledge that Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittamore have also been in contact with Jen Murphy on some recommendations and insight as it pertains to the recommendation for busing. And that was certainly one of the concerns that they had around sources of infection, so I appreciate their continued support. I suppose a comment I just want to make now then is, we'll, we'll get to the end of the meeting, and we talk about future agenda items. Each year in October, for the, I guess, 13 years I've been on this committee, we do a budget adjustment in October. In fact, we do more of them now that Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittamore are with us. I think it's going to be, just to my earlier comments about, you know, encumbering funds and being thoughtful that we don't run out of money, I'm expecting that we will, we need to have some conversation about a budget alignment at our next meeting, because I think that's our last meeting in October. And I might suggest that if it's appropriate, that Dr. Evans, Ms. Whittamore maybe model a couple of different scenarios. And it really comes down to, you know, whatever you're comfortable with, Julie. So based on, I appreciate everything you just said about kind of realistic expectations. So if, if one scenario is no return to school until, pick a date, I mean, after the planned spring break, I don't know, pick a date, you know, what does that look like from a cost point of view? And then you encumber those funds, and what are we left with? And maybe it's later. Maybe it's, you know, mid-May, end of May, and then maybe there's one that says it's the full school year. Because I just want to point out to everybody, if we don't have enough funds to cover the operation, there's only one way to go about it, and that's a special town meeting, unless we are able to get something on the warrant. And it's not even clear to me that an action at spring town meeting would even suffice, but, but that, that's a more detailed question for later. Just want to be thinking way ahead of this, until we have a better sense of the costs.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. And I would like to point out two things that I think we should be remembering, that even if we at some point are able to have a full return to school this year, unless DESI gives us some sort of waiver, we'd be required to continue to have a remote school for those students who want to be remote. I'm unaware of any guidance from the state so far that says that if we're in the green, we can just tell everyone, you got to go to school, or you're out of luck. And the second thing I'd like to remind people is that a number of the students who are in our school may be there because of the precautions that we have, such as six feet between students, and the lunch precautions we have. If we do go to a return to, full return to school, there may be many parents of students who do not want their kids in school under those circumstances. So we're actually talking about not just everyone back to school, we're talking about a great shuffle of students, some remote who might now want to return, some in-person, hybrid, who want to go remote, because, and we're talking about a great deal of disruption to the courses and the teaching. It, it is a gargantuan task to consider, not something that should be taken lightly. And I think sometimes we talk about a phased-in, or people in the public talk about a phased-in approach. There are certainly aspects that can be phased, but it's more of an revolution than an evolution as we go from, as we return to school. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Ms. Bergstrom. And then, if, if the committee is okay with that, after you, after you, unless there's anything pressing, we can move on and allow our guests to return to their normalized. Ms. Bergstrom?
My question is actually for Dr. Evans. So if Ms. Murphy or Ms. Dr. Bhutari need to exit, that's fine. Dr. Evans, you had mentioned that the return-to-school group that you had set up would be discussing this. Would it be appropriate, then, to also consider for the end of the meeting, adding to a future agenda item, a report back to the community and the committee with that group and discuss in regards to a full return to school, so that the community knows that it is on our radar, in our agenda, and that if people want to listen in, either for, for return, hybrid, however, wherever they are positioning themselves personally, that they know that that report will come?
Sure. No, I think that's a good idea. The plan for getting ready to open schools this year included that 25-member Planning and Implementation COVID-19 Response and Planning Team. There's also an individual team at each school level, and there's a District-wide Health and Safety Committee. So I think all of those groups will be tackling this over the next few weeks and months, and we will try to coordinate efforts and make sure we thought of everything. So we will report back to the school committee.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. And Dr. Bhutari, Ms. Murphy, thank you very much for coming, taking an hour and a half out of your day. I appreciate it. I know how busy you both are. You are, of course, welcome to stay in attendance. I think we have to de-elevate you both to, what's the, attendees. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to report and discussion items. We, the next, excuse me, the next report and discussion item, which is report on return to school. We have three bulleted items. I will turn this over to you, to Dr. Evans. I assume you want to go in order, but it's entirely up to you how you choose to do that.
Sure.
Starts with Special Education Enrollment Program, but again, I'll leave it to you.
Sure. So at the last school committee meeting, I was asked to provide an update on special education and our plans on transportation, and where we were on the particularly K-5 full remote program option. So Pam Gerard has prepared a presentation that really has a lot of charts with data, and it might be faster and easier for us to just take questions on the data charts that you've received, but then she can speak more specifically to out-of-district placement and preschool and anything else related to return to school for special education. What I would say is that the impact on all students is very significant when you're in a pandemic education model. But particularly of concern are the students who are challenged by disabilities, physical disabilities or intellectual disabilities, students who have social-emotional challenges. And we do have a fairly large number of students who are with us for four full academic days in the, in this category, students with disabilities who really need the extra time in school. I think we're at about 70 students at the elementary level, 68 to 72, depending on how you count them. And then also similar percentages of the students who've got identified disabilities at the middle and high school. What I would also say is, it's taken a heroic effort to try to coordinate services for our 800-plus students with disabilities, because they're in a variety of different educational models, both in-person, full remote, and then in-person for four days. And that Pam Gerard and the special education supervisors and the principals have worked incredibly hard to try to provide free and appropriate education to all students with disabilities, regardless of where they, where they are learning, but that we are stretched- But that we are stretched very, very thin. Trying to manage different models of education when students cannot be serviced efficiently because they're not in the same school with the same service providers has been a monumental task. And I just want to commend Pam and the special education staff and the special education teachers for really bending over backwards to try to meet the needs of individual students. But it is a very significant challenge. And I think one of the biggest challenges has been a larger-than-expected percentage of students with significant disabilities who are choosing to learn remotely and a significant percentage of our special educators who can only teach remotely. And on opposite ends of the challenge spectrum has been trying to match the providers with the right students and try to keep students with providers they're familiar with and trust. And so I'll let Pam speak just in general terms about the numbers that she's presented and any highlights. And I'm sure she'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gerard.
I think that following up on Judy, Judy, thank you. I think that, just to say thank you to everybody here at Central Office and the building principals for their support, the special education supervisors. IDEA has, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, has not been waived. And so we are still fully charged with full implementation of individual education programs as well as Section 504 accommodations. And this is my first pandemic and hopefully my last. There is no rulebooks that go along with this or any playbook. And we are truly trying to craft and do things as we are aware of them. So as Judy had mentioned, there's a whole bunch of charts. I think it's actually potentially better to ask if you guys have questions and to go through chart by chart, unless you wish to do that. These are the data points to the best that I could bring them and kind of parse them out for you.
Ms. Gerard, I just want to kick this off. Is there anything, because there's a lot of data which I looked through, is there anything that stuck out to you in particular that you would like to share? You know, things that we might have missed looking at this, something that you say, wow, this concerns me? Wow, this is actually really great to see this? Anything that stands out to you upfront before we go around for questions?
I don't have anything that really jumps out to me, Brian, to be honest with you. I think that the numbers are the number, you know, when we think about the hybrid model with the four-day-a-week, when we think of the students that are coming in, and then the remote. I don't know yet that we can predict what the trends are going to be and the budget implication. And I think that's, I don't want to use the word frightening, but it's a little frightening. I don't know what the budget implications are going to be. To Judy's point about the ends of the spectrum, there's one end of the spectrum would be the schedule. And then there's another implication of staffing who can then implement that particular schedule. And so there have been multiple iterations of documents. And we, you know, we continue to think that we have done it right until we recognize that, oh, here's an unintended consequence. I guess the analogy that I could share with the school committee is that it really is a set of dominos. And not having ever played the setting it up where you hit the one and they all follow and they all make these beautiful designs, we don't yet know when we hit a domino kind of where the design is going to take us. So when we talk about shifting, we talk about returning full remote, we talk about even students even changing the remote schedule. It has a significant number of steps and significant number of implications to it that at first glance, maybe you're like, oh, we can do this very easily without having to really dig down and say, okay, now what are we left with? I think that, you know, one of my bigger concerns to share with you is the out-of-district numbers. I've taken great pride in the fact that our out-of-district numbers have been kind of at or hovering below 50 with our program development. And we have an entirely set of different circumstances right now in front of us where things that we just haven't anticipated. We don't know the effect of remote learning for some of our students. We don't understand the issue of compliance being remotely. And when I share with you that IDEA has not been waived, we absolutely, every district around the state as well as school districts across the country are already facing issues of significant compliance. You know, you write an IEP for a brick-and-mortar building, and we are not writing them for remote learning, and that has not been the charge. So there's some very significant, you know, kind of what ifs. And I don't know what the answers will be yet. We're still actually generating the what-if questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. Open it up to the committee if they have any questions or comments regarding anything Ms. Gerard said or anything in this report. Ms. Marshon.
Just briefly, Pam, it looks like to me from the numbers that most families chose hybrid. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes.
Which has been probably a blessing for our administration and staff, I would imagine, in administering special education, right?
Xena, it follows more, it's different than what we knew, but it follows closer to what we know how to do.
So those families with special education students who chose remote, are we, as much as possible, given the logistical constraints, are we being, are we able to meet their needs as set out in the IEPs? Are there budgetary considerations we should think about in terms of hiring more staff or anything more that we can be doing for those families?
So that's exactly, it's a very good question, Xena, because that's kind of the next layer of where we're at. Even when parents have selected remote, we're doing our best to meet the educational plan to the greatest extent possible. And I am still working on scheduling and fine-tuning scheduling. And there could in fact be staffing implications coming out of this that we are unable to get all of the services scheduled.
Okay. Has that changed how much we rely on contracts, contracted services versus in-house kind of work?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Pam, for all your hard work, I can imagine.
Thank you, Ms. Marshon. Additional questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Nixon.
Pam, good morning. Thank you for all this information. You've got a chart towards the back that breaks down the specialized programs. So our specialized learning centers for pre-K through 5. And you're sharing with us numbers, hybrid, high needs versus full remote. And I was actually heartened to see this because for those students for whom the district and families really feel they benefit in that specialized setting, to your earlier point, that's also kind of a bricks-and-mortar concept. And so if I read this right, we only have two K, pre-K through 5 students, fully remote in our specialized learning centers. That's how it looks like it adds up. But you've got only one row for Vincent Owen, LBLD grades three through five. Are we, I'm assuming, do you still have LBLD for the lower grades? Do we not?
We have three, four, and five for our language-based programming.
That's all we have.
So dumb question. When did we, is it because we just don't have the numbers that we have LBLD in the lower grades?
Yes, for a number of years, Chris, we haven't had the numbers to potentially support a grade-two program. But when, I'm gonna get in front of myself very much so with my next comment. But thinking about kind of what we potentially need for some programming for next year, there is the potential for looking at our language-based program and potentially creating another strand of our language-based programming. So I'm actually running numbers and thinking about that piece as we think about next year's budget. Which, Chris, to your point, you're right on with the questions about we don't know the budget implications right now. And so what is this going to look like and how are we playing this out? The remote, the full remote for the pre-K through 5 for the specialized programs, that is 100% accurate with the numbers. At the secondary level, we have more, a higher percentage of full remote students. And we have some flexibility with some of the schedules, particularly at the high school. Middle school has been very challenging to get the schedules, the services scheduled for the full remote students.
So I appreciate that answer. I just want to offer, I remember vividly years ago, the conversation we had at the school committee table around budget, because we actually had such a successful and growing LBLD program for younger students. And by state mandate, you can't put first, second, third, and fourth graders all in one setting. So we actually created at one point, three different sort of blocks or groups. So I'm, what I, not related to what the purpose of the presentation was, but I didn't, I didn't realize we didn't, we weren't providing that for the younger kids. So if that's because there just hasn't been the need, that's one thing. But I'm a big believer in putting the support where it needs to be and early intervention. And so if the data show, Pam, that we need to be making an investment in grades one and two, LBLB, then absolutely, that's something we should be talking about and I support. The, I guess, my only, my two comments, I want to just quote Pam Gerard. She said two things that resonated with me. We write IEPs for brick-and-mortar, not remote. And let's remember the superintendent sort of acknowledging we're likely to be in this model for some time, which I interpret as a long time. I don't think you said long, but that's how I interpreted it. So many months. And so I always have a concern about the kids in our district who need the greatest support and attention. And so Pam, you were saying we're limited in terms of what guidance we're getting from the state, but we're certainly coming up with a lot of good questions. I hope we just keep our foot on the gas pedal and be demonstrative about that. So if we're not getting the information from the state that we need, what can we do to be assertive and advocate for our students and say, this is what we need and this is therefore what we're going to do? And if we do what we feel we need to do and we ask forgiveness later. I mean, I, there are young kids in our district who are relying on us to provide those much-needed services. And then the other nine words that sort of makes the hair stand up on the back of my neck is, I don't know what the budget implications will be, but I'm not throwing her under the bus because I don't either. And that's kind of my point today, that, you know, every day that rolls off the calendar is money spent. And so I just want to be sure we be mindful. Now that I feel like we kind of wanted to be sure that the model was working, the cohort model was working, that the teachers got the PD that they needed. And I know there's always an effort to make things better. But let's just not forget, our responsibility as a school committee includes budget. And that includes not running out of money. So I appreciate it very much.
Chris, if I can piggyback, I can't take any credit for the brick-and-mortar. We're thrilled that actually is the guidance that we are getting at the federal level and at the state level that this is how we continue to plan and support our students. I do think we're going to have to be creative with some additional programming as we start to think about where the needs are showing for our kids as we think about this. I, you know, I guess back to the question about are there trends? I just, I worry about the full remote option and our, you know, are we? Because it's new. I don't know what it looks like. So, you know, are we doing the right thing? Are we providing the right structure? And again, I think we're in the midst of collecting data to come back and to address things. But we've been working very, very closely with the staff, the remote, the staff that is providing the full remote options for learning. There's been, keep learning her on that. That schedule has been a tough one. The staffing, what does it look like for needs? We keep coming back and revisiting it and continue to refine.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. I saw that Ms. Bergstrom had raised her hand patiently, but because she's far away, sometimes I see it last. My apologies, Ms. Bergstrom.
Okay. I'm patient. First of all, Ms. Gerard, I want to thank you for all the work that you and your staff have been doing. Not only in the part of beginning of the school year, add schedules and full remote options and the hybrid options all need to come together to be able to provide the best services for our kids that are receiving services. I had some questions, also some budget implication questions and just some questions about, so that we're clear that even in the hybrid model, aren't students also receiving? Many of their services remotely since three of their days are remote? So while you stated that we know what to do when they're in front of us, that's not the only time our hybrid students are receiving services.
That's correct.
So model District Y is kind of an art in progress also for delivering services to those students as well. Is that true?
That's absolutely accurate, Michelle. The bulk of the services that we are able to provide kind of in this traditional model right now, even with hybrid, include the co-teaching support model and working with our kids, supporting our kids that way. You are 100% right because of the guidances that we have received in terms of health and safety with six feet apart and cross-grouping and kind of what the potential cross-contamination might be. Many of the related services are provided remotely.
And I guess not only the budget implications for, I worry about the budget implications not only for providing those services, but what kind of programming you and your staff may need to adapt to, to be able to deliver those services. You know, from difference in microphones or, you know, just online applications, are those things that are going to be coming before us as we look towards being able to deliver services remotely and add a little special education support?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, Michelle. We, many of the platforms, I mean, some of the moves that have already occurred in the district in terms of staff, us being a Google district and being familiar with Google Classroom have been terrific boons for us. We're more adept now with our Zoom platform, tying the Zoom platform into the Google Classroom and looking at different adaptations. We are actively researching tele-assessments. I don't know where that will go, to be honest with you, whether or not we're going to need to be thinking about tele-assessments. But if we do, we need to rethink how we are testing, what the materials are that we need, additional document cameras, additional platforms, who would be doing that? We are looking at, for our students who have hearing impairments and hearing needs, we're looking at what can we do to make sure that they can hear us? Case in point today, even with the masks on, I can hear most everybody when they speak, but not everybody all of the time. So I mean, these are things that, again, what are the needs? What do we have that we can work with? And then what do we not have that we now need to come back and research and be able to say we need to get in the hands of kids?
And then my last, my last is kind of a question and a compliment. I do appreciate that even in the remote model, we've been able to maintain co-teaching in our full remote classrooms. And I think that that is absolutely something that Winchester has been a little bit ahead of the curve on in terms of being able to provide special education service delivery. And the ability to continue to provide that to our full remote students, I think, have been incredibly helpful and will be helpful, I hope, for you in going forward and being able to maintain components in services for those students since they are available on Zoom five days a week. They do have their co-teacher present. So hopefully that will be a budget saver and not a budget driver moving forward in that way. And then my last question on top of that is where are we on ESPs for special education in the district?
Tell me what you mean, where are we? We are hiring like crazy. Poor Laurie has been processing paperwork, I think, on the daily. Poor Laurie has been processing paperwork, I think, on the daily. Tell me what you mean.
Wondering how we are doing. I have heard from other districts that they are struggling to be able to have enough ESPs too.
Oh, yeah. I think globally, across the districts, hiring staff that meets the certifications that we're looking for is very challenging district to district right now. Many of the ESPs have been asked to step into teaching positions, which is wonderful, and yet it leaves us and now how do we, how do we hire for that? I have friends in other districts that are madly seeking co-teachers and school psychologists and speech and language pathologists. Some of these positions are very challenging to fill.
An ongoing process then?
Yes. But I will tell you that Laurie has been, I, I have to again commend my coworkers. You know, I, the co-teaching model, you know, we've got some really unbelievable things happening with our, the co-teaching model that, you know, Laurie and the personnel, I kid you not, how she's been processing some of these leaves and spires. It has been multiple balls in the air to juggle.
So I guess the message for our parents and students receiving services is that we're peddling as fast as we can and that we're looking at new alternatives and trying to get in there as quickly as possible.
Very true.
Thank you both. Ms. Bollniers?
Thank you. I just had a question about the out of districts place, out of district placements. And you had just mentioned that there is possible growth in this year of 14 out of district placements. And I guess I just was wondering, what does that mean about possible growth in placements? Is that where we are right now or over the course of this year, we might be adding in more out of district placements?
So on that particular slide Karen, there's currently 51 out of district placements, pre-K through 12 plus, and there could be an increase of upwards of 14 additional out of district placements.
So in, okay, in addition to the 51, so, okay. And I guess you were saying it's, you cannot really look at the, or you can't really calculate the budget impact at this particular point because it is up in the air?
Well, exactly. But if you look, you know, a placement, the average cost of a placement comes in between $80,000 to $100,000 per student. So if you, if you go on the higher end of an average with 14 students that are placed at approximately $100,000 and you look at the potential budget implications, it, it takes my breath away. So I, you know, I need to just put out, this is kind of what I, the assumptions that I am aware of right now and what the potential implications could be. I can't say definitely that that number is going to be an accurate number, but I can tell you that when we start looking at what needs are for our students, that's, that to me is even potentially kind of a low estimation.
Okay. So if I could jump in on this, because I think this is a, if, that's okay, Brian?
Yes, please.
A serious, serious budget consideration. So every year we have parents unilaterally placing their students in the IEP process because they feel a different school, a private school would be a better option. And so if the team has not made that placement, we don't, we're not under a financial obligation to fund that, then there's a process that parents can go to, to appeal the placement. And sometimes we cost share and sometimes we don't pay for it at all. This is an unusual year because there are a number of parents who have unilaterally placed or are planning to. There are a number of students who it's very difficult for us to meet their needs because they're not able to attend school, because they are full remote, or because they have had substantial regression because they've been away from school for six months. And so there may be some students for whom a full remote option does not work and hybrid does not work and they need to be placed by the team into an out of district placement. There may be some students because they're failing to learn in the ways that we want them to, who need to be placed in an out of district placement. So it's an unusual year. So some students are being placed by families for a variety of reasons. Some students are being placed by us because we can't meet their needs in the pandemic realm in regular public education. And some students, we think, will be at risk. I think it's important to remember that a fairly significant percentage of our students who are out of district placed are students with social, emotional disabilities. And so there are, there are more at-risk students nationwide than at any point in my educational career because of the isolation caused by the pandemic. And so we're really concerned about students needing to be placed for a variety of reasons, including just regular educational issues, but also lots of students who need to be placed for other reasons that are more related to mental health or, or other family-related issues. And so without sharing the specifics of the cases, I think Pam is just giving us a heads up that every year it's unknown. We budget for, anyone who's been in our finance subcommittee budget advisory group, we look at all of the placements, we move students a year ahead, whether they'll be returning to us or staying in their current placement. And then we have several slots where we think students are going to go out and we sort of budget for those. But in general, we would never budget for 14 unanticipated placements. And it's not just the cost of the tuition, it's also transportation. And so the good news is we have a very healthy handle on circuit breaker. And I'm not overly concerned about the current year's budget, but I am concerned about a pretty significant increase in the FY22 budget as a result of the pandemic, depending on how long it goes on. And so I think it's always prudent to plan for the worst and hope for the best. And I think we have planned well in terms of managing our circuit breaker reimbursement and holding funds that could be used to pay for out of district placements from the circuit breaker reimbursement revolving account and not, and not hit our regular budget at this point. I'd also remind the committee that we have not, not yet tapped into the $300,000 plus that's in the special education reserve. We could go to the select board if we needed to tap into that. I don't anticipate that. But I think this is an important enough topic. Maybe Ellen, is there anything I've forgotten about special education placements or how you and Pam are working to watch and anticipate potential out of district placements?
Pam and I meet weekly, so we discuss the special education placements and kiddos that are on Pam's radar. To your point Judy, that we are holding and have managed our circuit breaker reimbursement funds very prudently for FY21. So we do have all of the circuit breaker money coming in for FY21, as well as what we retained in the circuit breaker account from FY20, which was most of our reimbursement. And then we also have the special education reserve money in excess of $300,000 that we've not tapped into at all. I think at this point, you know, Pam and I are going to go through the models a little bit more over the next couple of weeks and we'll be able to arrive, make a really good update as far as where we are now and what the implications are as we go forward. Again, we're not going to be able to know for certain how some of these students that are on Pam's radar, you know, what, how it actually all comes to fruition for, you know, in some cases, we're watching these kiddos right up until, until May and June. So it's, it's just, in some cases, it's just a waiting game, unfortunately.
Thank you very much because that was going to be exactly my follow-up question on what was happening with circuit breaker reimbursements and how it was affecting our budget planning.
Yeah. We really, we really worked hard, I think Ellen worked really hard to pre-plan for as much as possible once we knew last March that we were going to likely have a very difficult budget year this year. And I think we've been very, very prudent in keeping our reserve accounts as healthy as possible and tapping into other sources, spending down the CARES money, the, the large grant that we have. And Lisa Wong has been very supportive in tapping into the CARES money that has come into the town as well. So I think Mr. Nixon asked early on, you know, when we would have kind of our budget realignment and kind of a look ahead for the rest of the year. It is something that Ellen and I discuss hourly. So there are a lot of moving parts in the personnel line. And that's really, we're waiting for all of that to shake down in terms of leaves and replacements and until we kind of know what the, I hope positive variance is in that line, I say optimistically, and how that will affect the rest of our budget. We're really doing some significant planning for purchasing of things, technology, additional PPE, air filters, et cetera, the things, the extra things we need to get through the year. But all the federal grant money runs out at the end of December. And we still don't have our circuit, our final circuit breaker reimbursement number for this year yet, Ellen. Did that come out yet?
It's not come out yet. We are waiting for the state budget to be, to be finalized. I'm expecting to hear something from Desi's school finance out in the next week or so. I'm providing us with an update of where things are. I reached out about a week ago and was told that they were still, you know, open.
So I was, just wanted to, my biggest concern, which has been discussed a lot, so I think we can not discuss it further, which is out of district placements. I would like to ask if we could, it does not need to be in the committee necessarily, although at some point we will need one, if we could be receiving updates on where out of district placements are and where they stand. This data here is already as of almost three weeks ago. So just so we can have this on our radar, again, another one and a half million dollars. I realize that's picked out of the sky, but it's a real, realistic number picked out of the sky, something that we need to be very close to and understand as we're going along and developing next year's budget. So I just asked if, if we could have, at least at the committee level, if you could send out some updates as that's going. So a month from now, it's still where it is here or if it's, you know, actually it's 57 and we have seven placed and we're, we're, how we're paying for which ones, that would be helpful for us as we look at the budget for next year. Ms. Bergstrom?
And also add on to that, I don't know if there's a way to quantify it, Ms. Gerard, but also compensatory services. So I know that that may be a more nebulous number for you. It's a lot easier to put a number on out of district placements. But as you start to get your head around what the requirements might be on that, I worry that that number could be as high as this summer. So I think it would be good to start talking about that. And also, Mr. Schreier, it might be a time for us to also review the special ed reserve fund and how we may have to tap into that this year as well.
And that's a good point. We should probably put that on.
Can I piggyback off of what Michelle has said?
Yes, please, Ms. Gerard.
The compensatory, the compensatory services and guidance that Michelle is referring to is a DESI recommendation that we're working on. And we won't actually have figures until probably the turn of the new year, well into January, February for those numbers, given the process that DESI has outlined. But there's, there is in fact considerations that need to be made per DESI's guidance, per individual students, per compensatory related needs from general education, general education through special education. So we are actively working on process and data points for that as we speak. But I don't know that we'll have any sense of that, Michelle, until January, potentially January through March timeline as we start collecting kind of what, what we need this to look like, what we want this to look like as a district.
Would we know the scale of it, Pam, though? Like?
I think that we're going to have a better, I'm hoping to have a, have a better understanding of it over the next six weeks or so. But I think in terms of some of the numbers and the actuality, I don't think we're going to know until the beginning of January and then actually play out, okay, now how, how are we going to support what we have in front of us?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or are we ready to move? Mr. Nixon?
I just, I want to just reflect on something because Dr. Evans said something that it resonates with me that I'm, I think we should apply as we face other decisions in the future. And I just want to say, I feel like in retrospect, I could have and should have done a better job making the case to prepaid tuitions with that modest five-figure budget surplus we had from the last fiscal year. I feel like Ms. Marchant asked me a great question at that meeting, which is why, given what we know about circuit breaker and other things, why is this something you want to do? And I think I really muddled that because I think what I said was, we don't know what we don't know. And what I like much better is what Dr. Evans just said, which is, we should plan for the worst and hope for the best. And that's what I should have said. But I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to write that down because we face so many decisions moving forward in this year. I think we can apply that to this specific discussion, but we should really think about that kind of mentality to a number of questions that, that we face. And, and I hope that you and the leadership team are kind of thinking about some of your decisions really in the same way. I think that's really appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Seeing no additional questions on this, thank you, Ms. Gerard, for, for all the work that you put into getting this presentation together. We are still on the same agenda item, but we move on to, I'm sorry, paper cut. Full remote? And, and that I will turn to you, Dr. Evans.
Sure. I think this should be fairly brief. I, we have heard from some full remote K to five parents. I'm not hearing much from middle and high school full remote parents, families. As much there were concerns obviously because we had some false starts around not anticipating some of the issues that might arise with the K5 full remote, particularly not the lack of connection to homeschool, the schedule that looked more like a hybrid schedule that did not look like an evenly spread connection to teacher schedule. And so I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we stand on some of the things that I had told you that I would address in relation to K5 full remote and answer any questions you might have. We really are meeting very regularly, I'm meeting weekly or more with the 23 full remote teachers, elementary principals, and central office administrators. We've reviewed and revised based on parent feedback, the weekly schedule to ensure that core academic and special subjects are spread throughout the four available days as much as possible, with the caveat that for some classes, that's a little more difficult because there are students receiving special support services, English learner counseling, special education. But in general, the feedback that I'm getting from any full remote families is that they think that the schedule is a good schedule for their children, not perfect, not ideal. None of this pandemic scheduling is, is what we would have designed had we started from scratch. But that there is a recognition that there will be continued feedback and that also a recognition that the full remote teachers are working with students all day long, every day on the four full days of education. And that individual student schedules may vary from the full class schedule, depending on the needs of the students in that class and how the teacher groups and regroups students once the teachers know how, what the students' needs are as learners. We've worked to minimize consecutive hours of Zoom time. In some instances, you heard a parent today say that the specials are back to back. That's because all of our specialist teachers, art, music, PE, library, have very full schedules with full 24-plus student classes. They're working across the whole district. Revising those schedules is very difficult without, and it does have a domino effect every time you change one. We put out a plea to the 400-odd families who are full remote K5 for their, a family member to serve on a full remote parent or guardian advisory group. We received about 20 completed forms by last Friday. And I've been working with the principals to select the representatives. We want to make sure there's at least one representative from each of the schools. We're likely to have two from Morocco and Lynch because they have the largest number of full remote families. The primary purpose of the group is to enhance communication and support continued homeschool connections through purposeful activities. And because we want them to meet with our newly And because we want them to meet with our newly appointed representative teachers from each grade level, representative full remote teachers, and the five principals and central office, we want to keep to, you know, a reasonable number. But that group will meet regularly, at least monthly. And I think it'll be really helpful to us to have that advisory group. The full remote lead teachers have started to work very closely with their grade level full remote teachers, and they are acting as a troubleshooting group and enhancing communication with, within between all of the full remote teachers. So those are the sort of completed action steps, the action steps that are in process. We really are committed to ensuring consistency and equity across the district, as we heard from some of the speakers at Public Comment. We will all be together one day. We hope sooner rather than later. And we want to ensure that all of the students, whether full remote or hybrid, have similar skill sets and access to curriculum, that is, grade level content and skills. And so the teachers are expending a lot of time planning. And we're trying to ensure consistency between the full remote and the hybrid teachers. I've also drafted a feedback survey that we can send to all families to get more information about what the strengths and challenges are of the, both the full remote model and the hybrid model. And in addition, we've also purchased some literacy resources for the full remote teachers that include some videos that they can use with their families. That was at teacher request. So those are the things we're working on. We're only a couple of weeks in, but I think we've made some good progress. I want to commend the full remote teachers. They didn't ask to be appointed full remote teachers. They didn't ask to be upended and sent to a different school to teach in a different grade level. Many of them are co-teaching, as Ms. Bergstrom said, and working with students with significant disabilities remotely, which is a challenge that we have not faced in the past. And so I think as a team, they've pulled together. They're optimistic. They're happy to be working with our students. They love their classes and want to work closely with families to support the best possible outcome. And so I'm really proud of those teachers and administrators who've been working so hard to make this a success. So that's where we are, happy to answer any questions that people might have. But I think we have addressed all of the concerns that were originally brought up. The concerns about not having enough to do in outside hours. There's concerns about choice boards, those apply across all elementary levels. Jen, Ellen, Emma has been working with the curriculum coordinators and elementary principals on those and grade, grade level teams to respond to parent concerns. We're not a workbook kind of district. We don't send packets home. That's, that's not something that has proven to be successful, I think, for most of our students. And so it is not in our plan to send more packets home, as some other districts might do. But we will certainly try to ensure that the choice boards and any other activities or materials that we send home are challenging and engaging, and that they align closely with what we want students to know and be able to do. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I want, I want to thank you. Well, it's three weeks ago, we, I won't say we charged you, but you certainly committed to taking a number of steps. I appreciate the work that, I will say it's additional work, but it's part of the whole package of work that, that needs to get done to make this year work. And I appreciate you outlining what's been completed and what action steps are still in process. And I assume that we will continue, I'll open up for questions, but I assume that we'll continue to hear more about the action steps in process as time goes on, maybe not in a full report like this, maybe just in superintendent report, but I appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to open up for public, excuse me, for committee for questions or comments. Mr. Nixon?
So, Dr. Evans, thanks for all the information. At our last meeting, we had discussed some principal engagement on this remote parent advisory group. I don't see them called out. Can you just describe what role they're playing, if any, in your mind right now?
So at this point, all five principals are meeting with me and with the full remote teachers when we have our weekly meetings. One or two of the principals will commit to, I'm assuming all five will meet with this parent advisory group in the monthly meetings, but one or two will be the primary contacts for the, for the group. And I haven't settled on which two, but a couple of them have said I'd be more than willing to take on the leadership on this. So we just haven't finalized it yet, nor have I notified the parents who the principals selected as the representatives. And so that will, that notification will come later today.
So I appreciate that. Like you said a moment ago, there are a couple of schools, like you said, it's Morocco and Lynch, where we have, you know, they have the greatest representation of remote. So, you know, if we were limited to two, those two come to mind, but I just, I see a lot of value. I realize there's only 24 hours in a day, and people have to eat and sleep and tend to their own family's needs. But I would just remind everyone that one of the messages we, we tend to deliver in a usual school year, when there's not COVID in the fall, is that if, you know, if parents are having difficulty with their child's teacher, you don't come to the school committee, you don't go to the superintendent first, who do you talk to? You talk to the teacher. And then if you have difficulty kind of finding that resolution you're looking for, who do you go to then? You then go to the principal. And so I think, given the strains that everybody is under, to the extent all five principals can kind of be in that loop and understand what the parent concerns are, and kind of what the teacher team is open to, it's just gonna really help us make this a more well-oiled machine. And I'm, I, I don't know, I don't know that I can appreciate, like, how much time commitment this really represents, but for me personally, Dr. Evans, I think it would be really huge for all five principals to be engaged in this. I think it's a win-win.
Sure. Appreciate that.
Additional questions? Ms. Marchand?
This is more of an anecdote, Dr. Evans, and I want to, it highlights the, the ability of our district leadership to take feedback and commit to change. And so when we were doing our Lynch Zooms of welcome back, we heard a lot of angst around the remote parents feeling left out because of all school meeting plans, the newsletters. And Ms. Droule took that and took it to heart and, and really was committed to making them feel as included in the Lynch community as possible. So we, parents were told, if you want to join the newsletter of both your remote school and your homeschool, go for it. All kinds of activities from Parents Association is being very inclusive. And so I really want to thank our staff for that ability to, to work together and to create the kind of environment our families need to cope at this time. And I especially want to thank Ms. Droule, who has been incredible as a brand-new principal to our district. She has built so many ways to reach out to our families. And so it's, we're really blessed to have her, and, and I'm very proud of our district for its ability to take feedback and, and strengthen the model that we have. So thank you to all.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to her.
Thank you.
I tell it all the time.
Additional questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Bergstrom, I see your hand is raised.
I'm curious, Dr. Evans, when you intend to have the first meeting of this parent advisory group? Because I, as both a remote parent who has been incredibly humbled and impressed by what the, her elementary remote teachers have been able to do with their class and their kids and keep them engaged, and feel like they are part of a classroom, and have a child who's excited to go to school every day, I completely support the, the teachers in what they are doing. I think that some of the parents may have some different perceptions on how successful the schedule changes have been and the communication that Ms. Marchand is talking about. And I'm curious to hear from them. So I'm wondering when the first meeting of the parent advisory group will be, and if it will be before our next school committee meeting, so we're able to actually incorporate some of the parent feedback into this reporting on our, our return to school.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
So I need to check with the remote parents and see what schedule would be convenient for them. I had said at the outset that this would be a 3:00 to 4:00 PM meeting, because the teachers are teaching all day, and so after, after the teachers are completed their teaching. So I need to coordinate it with the teacher reps and the full remote parents and the principals, but I'm assuming it'll happen within the next two weeks. It, it may not happen before the next school committee meeting in two weeks. It really depends on schedules and availability. We have a lot of night events coming up in the next week or two. And so, yes, one, two, bye. I think I have every night already spoken for it. So, so I, I think it's really important for me to be there as well. So we'll, it, it may be that there's some availability of the, parents who've been appointed to meet at a different time other than after school. So let's, let me get back to you on that, but I hear you that we want to be sure that we include all sources of data, including the surveys, which will, should go out within the next two weeks as well, and the feedback from the parent representatives.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Additional questions or comments regarding the return to school for K-5 full remote?
I, I just have one more additional question for Dr. Evans.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Schedules have been changed for the full remote. Yet we heard Ms. Jarrett say earlier that every time a schedule changes, that it causes a sort of domino effect, and not a straight domino, but a divided domino pattern. So I heard two things. One, that you said that these schedules have been changed, but then that they would continue to be modified. But I'm, I, from what I hear from Ms. Jarrett, it sounds like these are the schedules we're gonna, the schedules that remote classrooms have now are going to at least be the schedules we have for the first semester. Because otherwise, that domino effect of delivery of special services, not just special ed, but English language learner services and reading services would then all be upended as well. So are remote parents to expect no more changes to the schedule going forward if this is what they had?
Sure. So I think that the, the whole process of how elementary schedules are developed and communicated to parents has been made much more transparent than it ever was. So it was typical that an elementary classroom would have a certain schedule that parents may or may not be, have been aware of. They might, they probably knew what day a special was going to run, which day was PE, which day was art. How the rest of the day was organized was not as transparent to parents. How much literacy, how much math, how many students were grouped or regrouped during that time? Who came into the classroom, whether it was an English learner teacher, or a special educator, or a reading teacher, and when? All not transparent to parents. So what I can share with you is that the general schedule for a class has been developed, but because the teachers have access to the students for other periods of the day, particularly for specialized services, the individual's schedule of individual students may change depending on their needs. As we become aware of students who need services or need their services increased or decreased depending on their, whether they're, they're getting English learner services, or counseling, or special education services, individual students' schedules may change. And the teachers have the capacity to group and regroup. So if there's a period, there's a one-hour period that says reading, it may be that during that one hour, students may be grouped with different students for different activities related to literacy. And so all of that would have happened in a typical week at school, where students would be regrouped and grouped. We do mainly inclusion for services, but we're not sending as many adults into the classroom, obviously, but remotely. You can do the same kind of model. But it is, what is challenging is that the specialist schedules, when I say specialist, the special service provider, English learner, special education counselors, are very, very full. And so there's not a lot of flexibility to shift their schedules without a domino effect for all the other students they service. And so the schedule that the teachers put out as the class schedule, within blocks of time, things could change. And within the week, students who are receiving specialized services may, that may shift a little bit as well. But right now, I think we've settled on a model that's working fairly well for most families, that whenever, nobody would ever say it's ideal, it's not what we would have wished. But we are looking for feedback, and if further changes need to be considered and can be made, then that's up to individual teachers and teams of teachers. The guidelines will still remain, that there's an expectation for 10 hours of instructional contact time between teachers and individual students who are full remote. And that is to be spread as much as is reasonable and possible across the, the full week, essentially every day but Wednesday. Wednesday is a half a day where the full class could be together in the morning in a different way. And so we're really, I think, working hard to be responsive within the parameters of the restrictions that we have in, in terms of staffing. So may, so right now, I don't think there are, there are plans to make any significant changes to the schedule, but certainly we'll take feedback on it. And as I meet with the teachers and they learn more about their students and how they're grouped in ways that meet the student needs, that there may be changes.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I would ask if there are additional questions? If not, I have one. You mentioned what the choice boards and how that relates, not just specifically to remote, but to all grades, and how, these are my words, not yours, it's still a work, work in progress. I would ask that you keep us updated on that work in progress, because it's certainly something that we've heard from families about. And I just would want to make sure that whatever improvements or changes are being made, that just the committee is in the loop on that.
Sure. Jen, Ellen, Emma could maybe speak to choice boards, and she's the one who's worked more closely with the development of them. If there's anything in particular that you think would be helpful to share, Jen?
Dr. Ellen, Emma. You are, ah.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute.
That's okay. Thank you, Dr. Ellen, Emma.
So I'm happy to answer questions, or if there's specific things that you'd like me to talk about?
Oh, I think in general, what we've heard from parents is, and what you hear, obviously, is not always what the community as a whole is thinking, you're hearing from a subsection of the community. So granted that, that there's some lack of, some apparent lack of cohesion or, or connection between the choice boards and the curriculum. And I know Dr. Evans said that there was actively, work actively ongoing to, to enhance these, and I would, you know, any comments or, that you have about that would be very helpful for not just us, but for the community as a whole.
Sure. So I think kind of the first thing to keep in mind is that choice boards are for a two-week span. So really, you know, we're just getting going on our launch of our second choice board. So I would say it's very early to be making judgments. They've barely launched one. And again, remembering that really people just saw their students from each cohort, really four days in September. So again, the idea of being aware of the time, because it's getting colder, I think we're all thinking, you know, we're moving into later fall here, but really remembering, you know, we're on day five or six of school for each student. And I, you know, choice boards, although they can be a great tool, certainly are not our ideal way to deliver services as part of their quote-unquote "school days" with us. But again, this is one of those things that falls into that category of, given the model that we're on, something has to be created for the times that students are at home or not with their teachers. So, and certainly based on our contractual obligations and based on just what's a reasonable amount that teachers can produce and handle, we can't expect that everything on those choice boards are created by their specific classroom teachers. So certainly there are things that as the year goes on will directly connect with what they're doing in their classrooms at their grade levels. But in order to give students a, a more well-rounded education than we're able to in our limited time with them, and be to be able to share the workload around the creation of the choice boards, there are people contributing to them that are not their direct classroom teachers. So for instance, Catherine Dwyer, who's fabulous, will do fabulous lessons on all of their choice boards around science and environmental. But certainly she is not going to know and have a relationship with all 2,000 But certainly, she is not going to know and have a relationship with all 2,000 elementary students. So they will be working on their standards that are appropriate for their grade level, but it won't be the same thing as the classroom teacher. And I think part of what we just need to continue to do as a district and as leadership is to hear the feedback, grow where we can, but be honest with where we can't. And these choice boards won't be directly connected to everything in their classrooms. Or if they will be, they will be much smaller choice boards if we were to tweak for that. So I think we need to just understand that it's the beginning of the year, people are just getting used to the schedule, everyone, parents, students, teachers, and see and continue to get feedback, grow where we can, and be honest where the facts are of things that just can't happen. As Judy said, you know, we don't support packets. Certainly, we could do things to just fill their days, but that's the opposite of what we're really trying to do and hope that our students, the way that they learn and what they learn.
Thank you very much. I actually love everything you just said. I, part of me hopes, I do not have a child who's K-5, hopes that someone has communicated as succinctly and clearly to parents what you just did to us there. Because I think that gives a good perspective on what choice boards are and what they are not. And I'm not, it's not clear to me, again, just based on the people who come to us, which is a self-selected group, that they've heard that message or internalized it, may be the alternative, so.
Thank you. We'll keep sharing it.
Thank you.
It's helpful, too. There's a lot of information going out, people nowadays, so it'll be helpful to reiterate.
I am sure, I am sure. And that's why I'm careful to say they've either not received it or not internalized it, because we do get a lot of emails about all sorts of things. I don't know if there are additional questions on this particular topic, or on full remote, on the choice boards, or if we want to move on to the next agenda item. Ms. Bolinier?
I was just going to make a follow-up comment on the choice boards. And I think it's, I would just say, Dr. Ellen Emma, that I think it's very helpful to, and Dr. Evans, I think it's very helpful to have the feedback from the teachers on what, I think that the, at least in our third grade over at Vincent Owen, and I think across the district, there have been emails that come home on a weekly basis, just saying, this is what we are doing in class right now, and these are the, these are the topics that we've touched on. And I do think that that is very helpful, so that parents and guardians can be apprised of what's happening in the classroom, and how best they can tie either the work with the choice boards to what their children are learning. And I guess one of the other items is around the subject of the packets. I do think it's helpful for elementary school children to have the opportunity not to be online, but also to be able to work with their fine motor skills on handwriting. I have a third grader, his handwriting is, leaves something to be desired since the beginning of COVID, and maybe even before that, but we won't get into that. But I do think it's helpful for them to have that reinforcement on their remote days of being able to write and produce something else. So I think having that opportunity in the choice board time is very helpful, as well as receiving, I think, one of the important parts in our education is, or in our children's education, is receiving a little, is receiving feedback. And so, whether it's feedback directly related to choice boards, or to what the work that they're getting in the classroom, I think that's very helpful, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things that they've been working on with the choice boards is that it may be beginning with a technology thing, like you may be online to students or watch a little video on what you'll be doing, and then trying to have students go and do something more, right? Then it's time to get off of your device and go out into your yard and find something, or to go around your house and measure these pieces, or do this, so that building in more hands-on and more off-of-the-screen time, but clearly, they'll still need to get direction and expectation first electronically on their at-home days. And then having them be able to return and reflect on it, or do something with it, and allowing different choices, certainly because they're not having to turn in their work. If parents feel like practicing handwriting is something important, certainly the students can be writing their reflections or their pieces by hand at home, because, you know, it doesn't have to be submitted electronically. So that's a good time to work in that practice, too.
Dr. Ellen Emma, can I just follow up on something this Bolinier says, I think I have heard it from parents, too? It's the notion of receiving feedback on every activity a child does on a choice board. Is that, I wonder if that's something that is the result of another view, parents having to a classroom that they don't normally have, do, in a regular primary classroom?
Right. Good point. Yeah, that is a question we have. And certainly, you know, there are constraints we have around, you know, the teachers grading and doing those pieces, is there, obviously, with another group of students during that time? So certainly, we have contractual obligations. But to that point, Michelle, I mean, very much of what happens in the elementary, and truthfully, the way most of us learn, we've just kind of forgotten it in society, and also, as students get older, there's so much that becomes grade-focused. But the truth is, the way we all really learn and practice and get good at things, there is no grade on. It's the experience and the activity that we're engaged in and involved in that then lets us go back and do something with those skills, which is certainly something that teachers measure and give feedback on and share with the students when they have them, whether they're the remote students or the hybrid students. So I think we can think of those opportunities as how, in the classroom, you would have normally extended, experienced practice, and then you're doing something more with those standards in the classroom with the teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Ellen Emma. Seeing no hands for questions, I think it's safe for us to move on to the third bullet, which is FY '21 transportation update.
Sure.
And I'm not sure who kicked it off, you or Ms. Widmore?
I'll kick it off, and then I'll let Ellen talk about the logistics.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that we did as a result of the pandemic was to delay transportation, the beginning of transportation for students, because the rules around safe transport of students has so many complex pieces. We wanted to try to do it at a smaller scale first, to be sure that we can manage it well and learn from that experience. So we have been transporting only mandated students K to sixth, and that would be sixth graders only, who live more than two miles from school. And that has been pretty successful. We haven't had any transmissions or any concerns related to that, that Ellen could speak to that more specifically. And in looking ahead for the remainder of the year, we had talked about deciding by the middle of October whether or not we would resume regular transportation, or some aspect of it. In discussions with Jen Murphy and in our office, and discussions with our bus company, I think what we're most comfortable recommending is resumption of bus service for students in K to eight only, and no bus service at the high school. Because the high school bus ridership tends to be highly variable. Many, many of our high school students are participating in athletics, and therefore maybe only would ride one way if that, because the change in the start of the school day, and for a variety of other factors, including the middle and high school students riding together on the bus. At this point, we're recommending resumption of bus service K to eight with a prorated bus fee for the two days students would be riding. And Ellen has done a estimation of where we would be over or under budget as a result of this. Obviously, we'd have very significant reductions in revenue, but we would also run fewer buses. We would not run the buses, the after-school buses that don't take students home, but take them to other places. And I think we've got a good handle on all of the DESE required, cleaning, seating charts, et cetera. So I think we're in a good place to resume, should you be comfortable doing this. This agenda item was split into two parts. One is kind of the update on where we are, and the other is a vote. So the proposal would be to register for bus passes through October 22nd, and then begin transporting October 23rd to November 6th for the bus passes, and working with the bus company on routes. And then, full transportation begins on November 9th for K-8, for the four hybrid days, each cohort riding separately for the two days consecutive. And then I'll let Ellen talk about finances. She's got it up, I don't know if we can make that a little bit bigger, but this is her estimate. There are a lot of unknowns in terms of how many students will choose to ride, and how many buses will actually need, but she's got a cost for additional runs per day as well, so. So Ellen, what did I forget to share in that sort of summary?
Okay, so first of which is, to your point, that we have had no transmission of virus while we've been transporting the middle school students. This has been a really good opportunity for us to be able to implement the DESE guidelines regarding transporting students, as well as work with the bus company, as well as our staff, about just the procedures, how students board, how students exit the buses, you know, hand sanitizing on the way onto the bus, hand sanitizer again on the way off the bus, so things of that nature. And it's been a really great opportunity for us to implement this at a smaller scale. What I've done here is, I was emailed to all of you earlier this morning, is just to give you a budget recap of where we would be if we, based on what we know right now. The cost of running the McCall one bus for the beginning of months of the school year, then shifting over to K transportation for the remainder of the year, as well as we have been transporting our students to Minuteman, which we are obligated to do, where that leaves us. I have gone through and based upon just some modeling I have done, which has been very conservative, where we would be with our bus pass revenue. I'm anticipating that because of ridership drop-off, as well as just students only going two days a week, I've adjusted the estimated bus pass revenue to $33,800. We were able to carry over some funds in our transportation revolving account, combined with our general fund incorporation. I'm anticipating that if nothing changes, and our ridership does drop off, and we're, there's no unforeseen additional costs, that we would be under budget by about $57,574. But that is based upon, again, only buses that we've budgeted, not having to add any runs for additional needs for higher-than-anticipated students' ridership at the elementary or middle school level. It's still unclear regarding whether or not the Commonwealth is going to authorize any additional relief payments to transportation vendors, as they had done in the spring, for the time period in which the school district did not provide transportation in the fall. So this is where we are at today. I am hopeful that we'll be able to, really be able to work during the two weeks, should the school be authorized, K to eight, the implementation of K to eight transportation, to work with the bus company from October 23rd to November 6th, to come up with really, really targeted bus routes, and possibly even be able to, based on ridership of some of the elementary schools, be able to collapse some bus routes, and be able to really give us the opportunity to be running buses at the targeted number of 25 students per bus, and not have the students on the bus for extended periods of time.
Thank you, Ms. Widmore. Before I open up to questions and comments, as Dr. Evans said, this is two agenda items. I will, at the end of the discussion of this, I'll be willing to jump into a vote on this so that we don't have to separate into just the way our agendas are set up. So are there questions or comments for Ms. Widmore or Dr. Evans regarding the proposal here?
May I ask?
Ms. Marshat?
I just, I'm wondering about the response you've gotten from families who need transportation, even within the boundary, if it's been a very, a significant amount of people who would like us to get this going.
Sure. Ellen, can you speak to how many parents have contacted you?
Sure. So we did send out a district-wide survey, in which we did receive responses from all families that responded, which was about 330 responses. And then over the last probably three weeks, I've received maybe about a dozen and a half emails and phone calls from parents. The bulk of them have been K to eight. I think I've only received one inquiry from a high school, my high school parent, but the rest have been K to eight.
And they're, they're looking forward to having bus transportation back?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, they're anxious.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshat. Additional questions from the committee?
Dr. Evans, have we had any trouble with students K-5 getting to school?
Can she repeat the question?
Her question was, have we, do we know of any K-5 students who haven't been able to get to school because of the lack of bus transport? No, I mean, I think families are extremely stressed right now managing home education on the, on the, either fully remote or on the remote days or on the hybrid, and transporting their students to school. I think they recognize that we were going to put off the decision on the bus transport. In a typical year, I have many, many requests from families who have a commuter, have one commuter parent, and the other parent is an at-home parent without a license, and they have a lot of difficulties getting their students to school. Some of them asked to be transferred to a different school for that reason, surprisingly. And so, the great unknown for us is, do we have students whose families have really had to sacrifice to drive them to school, and it could relieve the pressure on that family to put students on the bus? K to five, I think, there are lots of families with young children not yet in school, and I think that's one of the additional burdens to place on those families, to, you know, work around nap times for drop-off and pickup, and it's just much more convenient for them to put their children on a bus. That being said, I think we'll have much lower ridership than is typical, because I think parents are concerned about transmission. But the longer we go without school-based transmission, and the longer youth sports are successfully implemented in the, in the district and the state without transmission, I think parents understand that with the proper safeguards, that bus transport is also fairly low-risk. And so, I'm hopeful that if we're able to offer it, it'll be a really great benefit for some families who are at maximum stress levels right now managing home education, care for their own children and families, and also transporting. But I don't know of any specific family who's said, "I cannot make it to school without a bus."
And then my second follow-up is actually something you just said, Dr. Evans. You said that, you know, we've been successful, and parents are concerned about transmission levels. Some of the guidance around busing has recommended, particularly at the elementary level, you know, I applaud, I applaud everyone in the sixth graders for their mask compliance and their ability to sit in their assigned seats on the bus. I worry about kindergartners, first and second graders having the same compliance and ability without an adult present, particularly if there are 25 kids on a bus, as Ms. Widmore says, that's more than they have in a classroom. So I'm curious to know whether you've considered paying for monitors to be on the buses to actually help with these younger students and facilitate the successful, the successful busing they've seen with the middle school students, who are obviously more mature and could be more than a pocket.
We have not, and most of the, my fellow superintendents have not gone in this direction for a couple of reasons. One is, for positions like this, it's very hard to hire someone to consistently ride a bus. The, it's similar to a crossing guard, where we have a lot of trouble finding good applicants for these kinds of positions. And, and so, I'm reluctant to take on the additional expense of hiring someone if it's not necessary. We do have cameras on all our buses, and we would work closely with the bus company to monitor student behavior, and if it became... monitor student behavior and if it became necessary, I certainly would consider it, although I'm not optimistic we would find people who would want to be bus monitors. And we may have very low ridership and so, and also siblings can sit together, family groups can sit together and so often older siblings can assist with younger students with mask compliance. But certainly the bus company will ensure that the other parts of the compliance, the open windows, the hand sanitizing, the cleaning of the buses in between routes, et cetera, is all handled. So our students are pretty compliant and now that they're in school routines, particularly for kindergarten, I have a high level of confidence that they will comply and sit in their assigned seats. But if they're not, then I could be coming back to you asking for monitors or asking for us to just continue bus service, but I'm assuming that will go smoothly. The, I just don't think I'm going to be able to find and hire monitors, even if we could afford it. And not knowing how long we'll need transport, how long we'll stay open, it's difficult to hire people and then let them go immediately too. So that, you know, there are lots of unknowns around this.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Mr. Nixon?
So I have a couple of questions and I apologize, Ms. Widmore, if you said this. I was just crunching some numbers, which I'll get to in a second, but can you explain to us where in your second line in the document you shared with us, the regular, it says AM/PM regular runs, nine buses, is that, so that's five for elementary, but then it's plus four, is that, is that for the four additional for McCall because the one reflects the one we're already running?
So the one reflects only the McCall bus from September through the beginning of K-8 transportation in November and then it's absorbed into the nine. So we run nine buses, AM and nine buses PM. There has been historically a reduced number of AM buses because our ridership for the elementaries, because ridership for the elementaries is, has been lower in the mornings. However, we do run nine buses for secondary typically in the mornings.
Okay, so the one, so it's not one plus nine, it's really nine, nine includes one, but the one bus you show for the vote underneath is an extra bus?
That is an extra bus that we have historically run.
Okay. So the way the numbers just, I'm trying to think of this both kind of present day and the moment, but I'm also trying to think it up, I'm trying to take the broader perspective and just acknowledge that, you know, our subsidy of busing has been just tremendous in the past and if I'm reading these numbers right, this would be the largest subsidy on a percentage basis we've ever seen, just looking at the value of the contract and looking at the estimated bus pass revenue coming in plus the carryover. I wanted to, I'm holding short of making a motion on this, but I want to throw this out there for some, just some consideration. I wish I knew how other districts handle this. In terms of the price break we give families and how we break it down. So what we currently have is you've got a cost structure for one student and then you've got a cost structure for two and then we have one called family. So we're kind of splitting it three ways, right? Given our sizable subsidy, I was just crunching some numbers, if we were to eliminate the cost structure, the two-student cost structure, just get rid of it. And then so you either buy a bus pass for one kid or you buy a family pass, there are still significant discounts for all under the family option. I would share with you, if you are a family purchasing a bus pass for two kids in this, the proposed rate model, let's say one ways, that is, forgive me, it's $98 per student, so that's the 196 divided by two, so 98 bucks per student. If we were to eliminate that category entirely and just go with the family rate, you're still dividing that by two, that's 112.50, you're still getting a 12% discount rate off the single bus pass. And then the idea being if you, but if you really are a family buying, let's say for three, that's a more substantial rate, right? Every time you're going to take that number and divide by more kids, as the denominator goes up, your cost goes down. I wonder if that's something we should consider because the, if you assume, and I realize there are some families who put four kids on a bus, but if I think about it really simply, I know what one means, I know what two means, and if I have more than two, it starts with three. So if I'm taking those numbers to take the family rate and divide by three, we're talking about in excess of 42 and 43% discounts and it doesn't really, doesn't cost us 43% less to run that bus, right? So because we always, every year, we talk about bus fees, we're doing it later now because of COVID, and we typically, we typically just look at the number and we consider whether we want to raise the number, but I don't think we've really kind of looked at the structure itself and how we break it down. And I wonder, because the rates are so low as Ms. Widmore is proposing, I mean, dollar value, if this might be the time to consider a structural change that just makes it simpler. You can buy a pass for one or you can buy a family pass. And if we were to do that, we're going to see some additional support on the bus revenue and moving forward, I mean, structurally, you would see less subsidy in busing. I mean, this is something that could continue for future years, but of course, we would discuss it every year as we always do and we could look to revisit that. But it still represents, you know, a meaningful discount for families who just have the two kids. So I want to throw that out there and get some reaction to that.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I actually have a general question that's actually related to what you're just asking. If we have siblings on a bus, are they allowed to sit right next to each other?
Yes.
And how does that impact the ridership of a bus? Or does it not? Does it still, is the ridership of the bus still limited to the number of 25 or is it now 26? If we have, if two are siblings and they're sitting in the same seat, can we put 26 on that bus?
Great question.
Ellen, you want to take that?
Certainly. So it is my understanding that if there are siblings on the bus, they are permitted to sit together. However, it is my understanding that we are still capped at the 25 students and that having students sitting together also move need to look towards possibly modifying the seating of the students surrounding them because the student is, the students are now more spread out on that one bench.
Right.
So that has some considerations involved with it, but it is my understanding that regardless of siblings, it is still 25 students.
Thank you. So we turn that to you, Mr. Nixon. I just wanted to, needed to understand that point.
I would...
I guess, Chris, I would just need to know from Ellen how that changes her calculations for the sheet above this.
So what I did, Michelle, was I just took ridership and just was very concrete with how I did it. Did some very, you know, reduced ridership by, you know, to 25% and then adjusted based upon the number, the time left in the school year. So it really, I mean, we're doing very broad estimations based on total number of fees collected.
Can I just jump in and add? The consequence if we were to do something like what I'm suggesting is it would actually lower our risk, it would increase our bus revenue. Ellen's numbers, I went back and was just doing the math, I mean, within tenths of a percent, Ellen is maintaining the discount rate we have in the prior model. So, I mean, it's very consistent with what we've done before. But this would, in fact, supplement, it does two things, whether you want to think of it as supplementing some bus revenue or beginning to take a step towards reducing that subsidy. And I'm thinking, I didn't say it earlier, Ms. Bergstrom, but I might add, you know, because of COVID, how many kids have we seen out walking and riding their bikes and being outside? And I almost wonder if, you know, there will be many consequences of the coronavirus in terms of, you know, organizations and individuals and our behavior. But I can't help but believe that one of them is, I think some of our families and students are going to realize they're less reliant on the bus maybe than they used to be or needed to be. Hard for me to know that until we kind of see what plays out. But if we were to eliminate the two-student cost structure and simply have either a single or a family, if you have two kids who you need to put on a bus, then you're taking that number, dividing by two, you're still getting a substantial discount between 12% and 14% and the district is seeing its subsidy reduced. And we're talking about frankly, lower, the dollar impact here is lower because of COVID as Ms. Widmore just explained. So this might be the appropriate time to, and I hesitate to say test it, but I think that's kind of what we would be doing to see how that plays out.
Ms. Bergstrom, I think you were still speaking and it was hard to hear you. I want to go back to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
No, I want to go back to you because I thought you were mid-sentence at the same time, but it's too hard to tell.
I was just trying to understand what figures Ms. Widmore had, Ms. Widmore used for her calculations and making sure that us making a change here wouldn't impact her ability to estimate whether this was going to be affordable for us to do or anything like that. I hate to make math changes at the table without understanding the impact to her.
No, Michelle, because I've done very broad-based estimations based upon total number, total amount of fees collected in the prior year, removing the two-student option would not impact the, my calculations.
Is it having that happen or was it just a legacy that you had?
This was, this is, this having the three-tier model for transportation passes has been, was a legacy that had been in place. To be very candid with you, I would be very, very pleased if we went to a two-pass model, two-option model. It would definitely provide, especially as we're going with the online payment module for bus fees, it would simplify the process tremendously, I think, and also alleviate some confusion for families because there's, have been times also where a family has three students, three students and then they only buy, you know, a pass for their elementary students and don't buy something for, you know, a student in secondary and then midstream are adding for the secondary and then we're doing additional, you know, refunds and erating bus passes that way. So I think that this would alleviate some of that.
Great, thank you.
Are there, it sounds like there may be a motion, but we're still...
We're not at action item yet.
We're not at action item yet. Are there any additional discussion?
Can I just ask superintendent to wait? I mean, I have to, I have to acknowledge upfront, this is a bit of a curveball. I didn't discuss this with the superintendent or Ms. Widmore, it just occurred to me this morning. Does this seem like something worth considering when we get to an action item?
Sure. I would not oppose this motion.
Thank you.
Are there, again, on the discussion, is there additional discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed some of the number calculation. So what kind of impact, what kind of a difference is it creating in the bus pass fee for a two-family versus a three-family? So instead of paying one, oh, 292, now they're paying 340, so that's $50 for the year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure because I am concerned about some of the financial economic news that's coming out is getting a little bit more worrisome for me and I am worried that some of our families are going to start feeling a lot more pressure and even $50 is going to make the difference between rent or food or, so I'd really like us to be prepared to serve those needs as they arise if this becomes a difficult fee for people. But I think we do that anyway.
Well, Ken, that's a great question. So if I wasn't clear on the numbers earlier, I mean, I apologize if I was talking over Ms. Bergstrom. So if you look at the, as the proposed, the two, the two-child, two-student model one way, per student comes in at, the net is $98 per bus, per student, but if we were to eliminate that model and we just go with the family, the family piece, you're still dividing by two and so that cost is 112.50. So the difference is like $14.50. So there's some increased cost, but it's not, not $50.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was looking at, so those rates are increased.
It is $50. 292.
Not per student, per family.
Not per student, per family. A family that currently would pay $292 will now pay $340.
That's what I thought. That's where I was confused.
You get the round trip, Chris, you're looking at the one-way.
Ah. So they got their one-way and round-trip figures.
Yep.
It's $48.
I'm confused. So the 2019-2020 rate plus the proposed increase, correct?
No, no. That's the total rate.
That would be the total cost. The column to the right is what we're proposing charging students from November to June for a round trip. So what Mr. Nixon is saying is that our revenue has, is decreasing by many, many times because of the, but our cost remains pretty similar to typical.
Okay.
And that in order to recapture some of that revenue, just having two choices, one student or family, the difference between what they would have paid for two students if it's round trip is $48 per year. But I would remind everybody that free and reduced students who are food insecure have a, that would not have an impact on them, they would not pay for buses.
It's the volatility of who then qualifies as free and reduced, that's my concern, given some of the news that came out today, I think, about the economy. So it's just for us to be aware that, yeah, that helps us, but that might have down the line.
Yeah.
But I understand it's a limited impact.
So I have several questions, if I may. The first is if we were to approve, regardless of the rates we set, if we were to approve this plan, are we on the hook for any additional money with our bus vendor for having planned on more buses and having fewer buses? Contractually, if we do this, are we whole? Is the bus vendor whole as far as our relationship in this contract?
The bus, the bus vendor would be whole from the period of November 9th through the close of the school year. They would not be whole for the beginning of the school year. That is from when school, when we started transporting students on September 17th through November 6th, they would not be whole. There is still, it's still unclear how the Commonwealth is going to handle this piece. Last spring, when we, actually it was over the summer, when we had been having discussions regarding making the bus vendor whole by paying 70% of the bus contract value while school was closed, that had been done through special legislation that had been passed through the mass legislature. They gave districts and municipalities permission to pay for services that had not been received. So that legislation expired on June 30th, so we're still looking, municipalities are looking to, towards Department of Revenue for guidance again on how to handle this. But we have not received a final, any type of a proposal in writing from North Suburban at this time and I've been in contact with several of my colleagues regarding this as well as monitoring my list serve and it keeps coming back to that we don't have legislative authority to process any type of payments because that legislation expired on June 30th.
So that is super helpful to me because that says to me that we have potential liability on our bus that's not listed on this chart for the first 36 days of in-person school and that's unknown, is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Yep. So just to clarify the remainder of that question though, Ellen, we normally run more buses, like the additional afternoon buses. If we, if we cease running those, are there, are there any additional buses that we would be contractually obligated to pay for? Or if we need six buses and not nine, do we have a liability for the additional buses?
So for the after-school buses, we do not have the additional three that we run, there would be no liability. If we were to collapse our routes and only need six buses instead of nine, as far as the liability, there's language in the contract that says that we just have to provide North Suburban with written notification regarding changes in our number of buses. However, given COVID and given the response last year that the governor as well as the legislature had with providing relief towards our vendors, I can't speak to whether or not we would be held to, you know, a different standard because of COVID.
Can I clarify something, Mr. Chairman? So it sort of picks up on what Ms. Widmore was saying. My understanding of the bus contract to a layperson has always been that we pay for the buses that we use and that the purpose of negotiating that 70% value with North Suburban was in a way, if you will, to kind of keep these bus companies throughout the state whole so that if we happen to return in the spring, there would be bus companies still around and not in bankruptcy. This to me is a different model where it's a different school year, we're operating differently, operating differently. Our demand for busing is different, and therefore the bus companies should expect a different demand and adjust accordingly. I make an analogy to the airlines. So they've cut routes, they've cut curved service to cities, and similarly at the federal level, there was a subsidy for airlines that has run out. They began laying people off last week or this week because they have to, because they got to balance their books. So I'm, I'm assuming that we are moving forward. We're not on the hook in terms of liability. Clearly, we have to give a reasonable, you know, sort of notice, as Ms. Whitmore was saying. If we have to go from nine to six because we collapse routes, that's just going to be a reflection of what our demand is. And my expectation is, as a district, we should be paying for what we need and what we use, and our rates should be those that were set out in year three of the contract. Is that unreasonable, Ms. Whitmore?
No, it's not.
Okay.
However, I...
Sorry. I interrupted you. My apologies.
My only concern is, again, to advise, you know, the school committee that it's unclear as to whether or not there will be any additional conversation at the state level regarding this.
Okay. And I have two additional questions, if I may. The second is what, and it's more for the committee, I guess, what would we want to do as far as if we have a temporary closure or a, or end up having a permanent for the rest of the year closure? Are these rates you sort of buy in and you get what you get for the rest of the year? And if we have to close, well, then it was, it was a good shot? Or are we going to look at giving refunds for, per diem if we have to close for two weeks? Are we looking at, if we have to close for a month or a year, are we going to do a refund on that? I feel like last year, we were thrust into COVID, so we had to look back and decide what to do. This year, I think we can be proactive and we can decide upfront when people are signing up for bus transportation, what it is they're buying and what it is, what they're on the hook for, if we have to cancel. We didn't have that luxury last year. So it's really a question for the committee more than it is, I mean, I guess it's a question also for both of you as far as what you recommend, but, but what level of comfort? Because that would, again, puts us on the hook for potentially additional funds that we don't have, although, again...
It's a small dollar amount.
It makes a small dollar amount.
My recommendation would be no refunds. The cost to us to process refunds and the number of hours it takes to process them is, you know, extraordinarily high. This is a small dollar amount. It buys you a seat for the year for when we're open. And I think I would do the same as we do with sports. You know, if sports shuts down for three weeks, we're not going to give back part of the sports fee. It's just you're paying upfront to, for us to save you a seat. We hope we'll stay open. We plan to stay open. That would be my recommendation. But again, it's a committee decision. But it's a fairly, it's a very modest fee. And even if we were not to collect the fees, it's, you know, Ellen's anticipating only under $40,000 in total fee collections.
True. And in fairness, and in fairness, to connect to that, if we were to add additional days to the year, not to the year, but additional in-person days, or go back fully, we would want to be clear that this bus fee is based on a certain number of days, because obviously if we go back, on March 1st, we're full in-person, we need many more buses unless we can seat all of a sudden, you know, more people on a bus, too. I think we just need to be really clear in the registration what you're getting and what you're not getting for this fee.
Yeah.
Mr. Nixon, you looked like you had a question, and I kept on going.
I was, I was going to make a somewhat ironic remark, but it even applies to your comment, too, just about what happens if we go fully open despite, you know, the dim view that that will happen. I mean, you, we could dryly change it from a bus pass to a chance to ride a bus pass. That would address both ends of the spectrum, wouldn't it? I agree with the chair. I think we should have to be very clear with people about, about this.
Yeah.
You know, if we, if we were to fully close in short order and there's no busing for the rest of the year, I think that's sort of a different animal. Maybe the language is simply at this time, you know, the administration and school committee, you know, is not planning on refunds.
Right.
Just give us a little bit of wiggle room.
Agreed. My, my last question was, when I look at the estimated budget, and I see it's over-under budget, and I see it says $57,000 over, excuse me, under budget, I think it's important to see that that also has the $150,000 carryover.
True.
I just think that, I don't want that buried in there. It's really a hundred and $93,000 under, excuse me, over this year's budget. We just were fortunate to be able to have carryover, and I just wanted to make sure that was not hidden in there. And I know it wasn't hidden, hidden. I wanted to make sure it was clear to the committee.
Can we go back to that sheet for a minute?
Uh, maybe.
I'm bringing it.
So, Mr. Vinalio, that was the point I was trying to make about the subsidy.
Yes.
That's what was driving my suggestion about changing this.
Yes. I understood, but I thought that the, the carryover, I think, yeah.
So this would lead our carryover, presumably, Brian, to next year, and Ellen, to be $57,000 if we follow this model and badly. So is that, is our typical carryover in transportation? Is there one?
There's been a range, $50,000 to $150,000.
Okay. And that's just since you can...
Yes.
Yeah.
Could I just...
She said with satisfaction.
And could I, could I just piggyback on Mr. Vinalio's question about what if we, what happens if, if we do add another day as a phased-in approach or in the off-chance that we were able to go back in-person? What would...
So this number right here, the 136 days, that takes into account all days from now and from November 9th through the close of the school year on the calendar.
Got it.
It does not, it does not back out Wednesdays. So it, it does provide for, if we were going to add a Wednesday, or if we were going to be in-person, you know, four days.
Got it.
Or five days. It, it accounts for every possible day that there could be transportation.
That leads to an obvious question. Does that mean that the expected cost is actually four-fifths of those regular runs?
So that is something because of the, again, I left it in there just as a, as a just-in-case, not knowing, again, what situation with the bus company and whether or not there is going to be a urging that we pay for that fifth day because they are employing bus drivers for the district to transport our students for four days, if there's going to be any type of, again, pressure from the governor or DFC to make whole the, the contract for that fifth day, as well as just making sure that they, that I've accounted for if we did do a phased-in for adding a Wednesday for any students.
Not that I would want zero, Ellen, but does that, that $57,000 cover that fifth day?
Yeah, because it's already included in the 136 days.
It actually is the opposite.
Goes the other way.
It actually, there's about $100,000 in those regular runs for days that we do not need buses, if I'm understanding correctly. About $100,000, four-fifths of that.
I, I don't think it's quite that high, but I would go back, I can go back and provide...
$90,000.
Yeah. With a, with backing out every Wednesday, the remainder of the school year, what that cost would be.
I just wanted to understand it. I'm not, not saying there's anything wrong here.
Can I, just, can I tag on, Mr. Nixon? The observation that when it comes time to take action on this, I just want to be clear. We're, our action item tonight is setting the fee for the bus pass, that we're not voting to approve a busing rate. And to my earlier point, we pay for what we use. If these are, if these are, if these are the rates, if these are the three-year rates, if I understood you correctly, Ms. Whitmore, these are the three-year rates, right, from the contract?
Yes.
The contract was assuming five days a week. That's a negotiation point with North Suburban, and maybe it's a pretty short one, because we should not be paying for buses on Wednesday if we do not run buses on Wednesday. And if Charlie Baker wants us to pay the bus company, he needs to give us that money to pay the bus company, because we, I, we have so many other costs that are real, that we did not budget for, that we're incurring. So this is the reality of business and organizations in the time of coronavirus. And I'm, I want to be clear, when we get to it, my vote is not to approve a rate of 369. I want to vote on a bus pass fee and particularly, potentially a change in the structure. That, I think that's a follow-up discussion for later. It's just so early in the year with so many other costs that may come. This is not one I want to incur.
So, Mr. Nixon, if I may, I believe that what we're looking to do is approve the timeline and bus fee.
That's right.
And I do not believe that we need to, and I apologize for getting into the weeds on this, Ms. Whitmore. I do not, I, but I think the bottom line was important. I do not believe that we need to vote the number of days that we're busing.
Yeah.
We're approving the dates as spelled out in the memo. And, and I would accept, I think if we are willing to move into the action phase of this, I would accept a motion on that regard regarding the, it could be one big motion or it could be two motions, one to accept the timeline and one to accept the, the rates.
So I, I move that we jump ahead any agenda and take action item 5D out of order, if that's what you're suggesting.
Yes, please.
Dispatch it. So moved.
Second. Second.
We need a roll call. Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. So we can vote to approve the timeline outlined, as well as the rates outlined, if that's what we're looking to do, or if someone wants to change and remove. It sounded like there was agreement to remove the two-student from the superintendent.
Could I just ask one question, just about your, just about the spreadsheet on the cost, Ms. Elmer, or Ms. Whitmore? Could you just, what is the difference between, why are regular bus runs to McCall 36 days and regular runs, I guess, for the elementary schools, 136 days, and Minuteman Tech is 180?
I can, I can answer that. That's for the sixth grade that we're running now.
Okay.
The mandated transportation.
Right.
That's the one bus.
Okay.
The rest is for K to eight for the remainder of the year, beginning on November 9th.
Okay.
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 So I would happily accept a motion. There could be a nice big motion, or it could be two small motions. I could propose a motion.
I think there's a motion in the book.
I didn't say much.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Nixon, did you have a motion for the fees?
Well, I'm actually looking to see if I have my cover sheet on this. I'm not sure.
I have those. I do.
Unless, does Karen have one? She could pass to me, and I'll make a motion that includes an amendment.
So it's, that one.
Oh, right. But we don't have a cover sheet.
No, but if you can read my handwriting, it's the, the motion was vote to approve the full transportation fees as presented.
I think what we're, I'm looking for is a motion to accept the timeline and the rates as presented.
So I, I'll make a motion that would, the school committee approve the timeline as presented, and, and I move that we amend the cost structure in the proposed plan to eliminate the two-student cost structure. This leaves the one-student and family cost structure as presented.
Second.
Before I, is there a discussion, Dr. Evans? Does that satisfy what we need to get done for the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? We'll need a roll call vote. Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Votes unanimous. Thank you very much for what was a long discussion, but I think a very fruitful one as well.
Thank you.
And that leads us into the draft District Goals and Improvement Plan, which is in your packet. This is the first time we'll have seen this, except for when we got the packet. So this is not, this is just a discussion item for today. And Dr. Evans, I don't know if you'd like, I assume you would like to kick that off?
So we're now at almost three and a half hours, and I know some of us have other commitments this afternoon that we need to get to, particularly central office members. Can I make a recommendation that we defer this until the next meeting and that I accept suggestions or questions from individual school committee members? I have not yet presented this to the faculty for their review. There are two goals. The first goal is a social-emotional goal, and the second goal is an academic goal, but both relate to education in the time of COVID. And we're taken directly from the revised educator evaluation priority indicators that was, guidelines that were put out from the state. As you know, the district goals are the basis for individual educator goals and school improvement. And so I thought it would be good to align our district priorities in social-emotional learning and in academic progress in this way with two single goals, recognizing that there are a lot of things that will accomplish this year that won't be part of district goals. But I think, just in the interest of time, it might be prudent to put this, put off further discussion, but certainly take feedback. The one thing I would say is what's not on this list. We have goals and action steps, and then, based on your feedback, there'll be evidence of achievement added for district and for each school grade span, added to the next draft of the district improvement plan. So just, I think we're running a little short on time.
I would like to appreciate and value the time of all everybody on this meeting. If there's no disagreement, we will move to postpone discussion on this. If necessary, we can even schedule a standalone meeting to discuss this, just this one, before we vote, so that we will have an opportunity to discuss before the meeting that we vote. So if next meeting we discuss, then we could have a standalone meeting following just to vote. And if we get a standalone meeting to discuss this, then we could vote it at the following meeting.
May I suggest, though, this is one of the really important things that we do.
Yes.
And in, in a typical year, it even starts with some, some dinner meeting with the leadership team. Those are really helpful sessions. That's hard to do right now over COVID, excuse me, over Zoom, but, but maybe that's something we can consider. I, for me, I have a hard time seeing this, seeing us getting through this in just two steps. I did have some thoughts I wanted to share on this today, but I can appreciate me to be respectful of time. I mean, I totally support a one-off meeting to get into this quickly, and we might require two more, not one more, for a vote. And I would just ask the committee to go back and look at what we generated last year. There's some really good stuff that we generated out of that meeting with leadership team that's just as applicable today as it's ever been. And in fact, I might even say more so than it's ever been.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Is there agreement that we can postpone at least for today and move on in the agenda?
I, I agree. And I agree with Mr. Nixon that perhaps we need a standalone meeting to discuss these, too.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I agree.
So with that, we will move on to the remaining action items. The first action item, if I have this in the right order, is a vote to accept a gift from the Winchester Sports Foundation. Ms. Whitmore, if you could just explain what this is and...
Do you want a moment to get to the page in the book?
So I have it, Ellen. I can jump in.
Sorry. I just saw her name there. My apologies.
So this is a donation of a computerized timing system for track and field and cross-country, as well as training for other teams. And it's a $4,848 cost for this computerized timing system donated by the Winchester Sports Foundation.
Happy to make a motion, please.
I would, too.
Move to accept with gratitude this gift from the Winchester Sports Foundation in the amount of $4,848 for a computerized timing system for our cross-country and track program as presented.
I second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Votes unanimous. Thank you very much to the Winchester Sports Foundation. That leads us on to the next action item, a vote to appoint SEEM Collaborative Board. Each year, we vote to a member to SEEM Collaborative. Dr. Evans, if you'd like to just give the elevator speech of why you'd like to be reelected.
Well, if we want to be a member of the SEEM Collaborative, you need to appoint me to the board, because that's the way it functions. ESE requires this. So I do serve as the current chair. It's my second term in a row. It's, it's a great board, and we benefit greatly from our collaboration with the other districts in SEEM. So I would recommend that you appoint me.
So I have a question?
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
I will vote to appoint, as we always do, but a question to Dr. Evans, because you are the chair, can you share with us, how much time does that... you are the chair, can you share with us, how much time does that take you, especially this school year with everything going on? And is that, do you see yourself continuing on as chair? And when does the board sort of officially reorganize? Are we ahead of it, or are we late?
I'll be the chair for this school year. I'm hopeful that someone else will take over. There've been a lot of, there's been a lot of superintendent turnover, due to retirements mainly, and so there are a lot of new members of the Collaborative Board. How much time does it take? When there are problems at SEEM, it takes time every day, and I confer with the executive director regularly. But I also benefit tremendously from my relationship with her and the other superintendents who are in the group, and because we know each other well, we can share resources and propose program improvements for SEEM that are very beneficial to our students. So I think it's time well spent. Some weeks it's zero time at all, you know, it's doing the agenda, it's running the meetings, and it's advising the executive director, much like, you know, my, my relationship with the current chair of the school committee, where we speak or email every single day. There's a, there's a strong relationship between any committee chair and the, and the executive director or the superintendent. So she, she acts like a superintendent. She's great. And I was not intending to service another term, but COVID came and they kept me, they kept me COVIDed, so, yeah, I mean, I'm not intending to do, to serve, serve another term after this year.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
I would have a make a motion that we appoint Judith Evans to the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors for this school year.
Second.
A roll call, Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, you're reelected.
Thank you. I think.
That leads us to the calendar, which I think is fairly straightforward, I hope. Vote to approve the revised calendar. Dr. Evans, if you'd like to walk us through this?
Very briefly. So this is a strange year. So we have our, in many ways, never have I asked you to approve a calendar one or two months at a time. But we have a very collaborative relationship with our represented groups. A lot of calendar-related issues are included in contracts, so we need to confer with those groups, and they need to vote on, you know, significant changes to the contract. What we're trying to do is maximize in-person learning time. And so some of the changes to the November and December calendars have to do with primarily early release days for teacher conferences at the elementary level, where we've moved them to December because of our late start, and the short amount of time teachers have to get to know their students well, moving them for a full day from K to five on December ninth, and a half-day on Tuesday, December eighth, as opposed to three half-day releases where students would only get a half-day in person. I am proposing the eighth for the AA cohort, because the last half-day for professional development came out of the BB cohort. Overall, for full days, we have counted very similar number of days, it might be off by one day between the two cohorts, not knowing how long the cohorts will be in existence. We're just looking at sort of two months at a time. This doesn't change any of the vacation periods, the December vacation. We have several days off in November, starting with a half-day on the twenty-fifth for Thanksgiving, and then having Thursday and Friday of Thanksgiving week off. We also have Veterans Day, again, out of our control, a no-school day, and professional development, full day on Voting Day. But because it's a presidential election year, we expect high voter turnout, we had long planned to have this be a professional day, we're going to keep it a professional day, to minimize contact between, especially in COVID, between our students and people who might be in the building to vote. So, this doesn't talk about any possible changes that might happen between January and June. We don't know whether we will need to shift to full remote with very little notice, which might require us to have a day or two planning time. So we're kind of banking some of our professional development time in the second part of the year, knowing that during the winter months, schedules could be challenging. So, the, I want to make it clear that your vote to support this still needs to be followed by a vote from the unions, so.
Can I ask a couple of, all clarification, so, and forgive me, because I'm, you guys, you and Ms. Marchand presented us a lot of information on the MOAs with the union, but did, did we agree in the MOAs that the union would vote to approve the calendar? Because our standard collective bargaining agreement says that we consult with them, but votes on the calendar, rest of the school committee, not the union.
So it's not just the calendar, but some of the events on the calendar are in the contract itself, and were not changed as part of the MOAs. And so it's not just the calendar itself, but it is how many days teachers will have for conferences, or, or, and what kind of time they'd have for professional development.
Right.
So, when we set the calendar for the year, we're supposed to consult with them, but when we make changes to working conditions, and that's what this is, they need to, they need to have a, it's not a union ratification, but I'm asking their executive committee to pull their membership and vote to support this, so.
Okay.
I, we've already negotiated it with the union president, so I think there'll be support, but I wanted to get it on the radar screen of parents as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And then, on December ninth, is this, ninth is a no-school day, and it's the BB cohort conference day?
It's, no, it's the conference day for all K, pre-K to five elementary students. So, the eighth is, in the afternoon on the eighth, the teachers will be releasing students.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got it. I think we could put a, if we put a space between AA on December eighth, I just read that wrong, I thought that meant cohort AA, pre-K through five conferences.
No, it's early release, pre-K to five.
There's two things there now.
Oh, okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yep.
That will help me hugely.
Okay, we'll make, we'll make a space there.
Thank you.
Dr. Evans?
Sure.
Can you also, Dr. Ellen, am I really quick, talk about why we still have professional development days on the calendar, even though we have the half-days on Wednesday for elementary teachers to collaborate and the more degrees at the middle school and high school, why those days are still important to maintain even beyond the contract?
Jen, do you want to talk about PD?
So, although collaborative time is certainly professional development time, as they're often doing more than just planning together, they're learning from each other and growing. But that's typically tied specifically to what they're teaching with other people that teach the same thing. The benefit of the professional development time is that it allows people to work with people outside of their areas, and to work on developing their skills with expertise that they don't have within their group, grade-level department already. So that's when we do work around technology. So although I might be teaching high school math, I go to a PD where I learn more ways to engage my students with Zoom. So that's our opportunity to have people work K-12, and to work on focused topic areas that aren't within their area of expertise where they learn from others.
So for parents to understand, as we go forward and approve these calendars, we're still going to have professional days on the calendars.
So we will still have professional development time, as, you know, as Judy shared, we haven't fleshed out what the whole year looks like. But certainly on those days, there will be professional development where they're having opportunities to learn beyond their area.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there additional questions? And if, if there are, yes, and if not, I would also accept a motion to...
I had a question.
Question, Ms. Bollniers?
I just had a question on the number of days per cohort in person, and I know you had said that they were off by, that they might be like one day off.
I think they're essentially the same, there might, one might have one more than the other.
And is that just through, from September through December?
No, that's the whole year.
Or for the entire year?
Right.
So right now, even though it's like a fifty...
No, we excessively went, went through and counted each, each has essentially the same number of full days. There may be a slight difference in the half-days, but we haven't determined when we're going to have all those half-days at this point.
I can make a motion. I move to approve the revised calendar for the months of November and December 2020 to 2021, school year as presented.
Second. A roll call vote, Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, votes unanimous. Thank you very much for making this all work.
You are most welcome.
That leads us on to, we voted the transportation plan, that moves on to the chair report. I actually had a couple of things I wanted to talk about today for the first time ever, because usually, and I will be brief, I shared with the committee a document that was from It is a resolution, which I'm not asking to be voted on, I'm, I'm looking for whether there is interest in the committee moving this forward to a future meeting to discuss and debate. So not a discussion about this, simply look around and say, yes, let's have this. It was a motion that said, resolve the MAS, that MAS-C, although it would be Winchester School Committee rejects the call for students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2021 school year, wherever. We deem those students to be held harmless for not taking the MCAS, and that their graduation requirements shall be determined by locally-controlled voices of the school committee, which would be us. And then additionally, we reiterate our call for moratorium on high-stakes testing in 2021 school year, so that all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. We urge the legislator to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing of three years. I am asking if people are interested in, I'm simply looking around if this is something that you would like to have on the agenda for a future meeting to consider, potentially wordsmith what we would want to say, and approve.
Yes.
Yes.
Given that expanded performance assessments were part of our district goals last year, and we will probably talk about it at that upcoming one-off meeting you mentioned, I think I agree we should talk about it and maybe put it on that same agenda.
Okay.
I see them as related.
Thank you very much. So, I, I will plan, look to have a, a one-off meeting where we can discuss that and discuss our performance goals for the year. The other thing I wanted to do, which is, I think ironic, is I wanted to give a shout-out to the high school for their effort regarding standardized tests, that they are throwing a standardized test, a version of the SAT, for our seniors only on Wednesday, the fourteenth, and they, October fourteenth, and they went out of their way to get sign up for this, and they're going to, really working to get, so any senior who wants to take the SAT this year will have had an opportunity. And that's not something that most schools, or most seniors this year, will be able to say. So I really want to give a shout-out to Mr. Mahoney and everyone at the high school for making that happen. I was at the high school PTO meeting last night, and it was something that, it was clear you could tell he was proud to be able to accomplish, and he's really hoping that everything can go smoothly between now and December fourteenth. So I think it's ironic that I want to bring this forward against standardized testing, and at the same time, thank Mr. Mahoney and the high school for doing a good job with standardized testing. And that's all I had to say.
I think I'm, I think I've shared enough today.
Okay.
Can I ask the superintendent, where do we stand on PSAT? Any update from our last meeting?
So, actually, at the meeting last night.
Well, see, you weren't done yet.
The week later, it's scheduled to happen. I don't remember the date, because funnily, it didn't hit me quite the same way SAT does, because I have a senior. But it's scheduled, hopefully to go smoothly about a week later, and I don't remember the date.
Okay, great.
But, for future agenda items, we have, first, Ms. Bergstrom?
The following segment.
Thank you, thank you. Someone who has a junior probably is a little bit more tuned to that. We have future agenda items, personnel update, discussion on district goals and improvement plan. We'll need enrollment update, because October one just took, went, came and went, and we will have our October one enrollment. The Lynch School Building Project update. We will be having budget updates and budget realignments. The return to school will continue to be a ongoing discussion item at the entire year. So people have said, well, you have returned to school, I can't believe I can't make the meeting. And I said, don't worry, we'll be talking about it next week, too. Additional items, as we just mentioned, we will have the MAS-C resolution.
So I was to have given a Morocco and capital update at this meeting, right now, this morning, but that did not wind up on the agenda, so clearly we wouldn't have had time for it anyway, so we should put that on there.
It is added there right now, and hopefully I won't screw that up again. My apologies.
Do we, do we need to have any discussion about our preparation for town meeting, just as an update?
Yeah, we should have an update for a town meeting. We will, so, we, town meeting is, I believe, on the fifth of November. We've been invited to give a five-minute presentation to town meeting. The chair and the vice chair will record, it will be a virtual town meeting again this year, chair and the vice chair will record that presentation in five minutes, I anticipate that will be maybe five or six slides at best. It will not be lengthy, and I think actually that's a great idea, an update on town meeting would be...
And if you could humor the request, Mr. Chairman, and it has to do with town meeting and timeliness, so I had asked the school committee their thoughts on a name we would give our Morocco investment moving forward. I heard back from a couple of people, I just wanted to share, we had another capital meeting last week, and the, the report is already kind of drafted, will be going out to print very soon. Capital would like to call it the Morocco School Life Extension Plan. If people feel strongly that it should be changed, I just wanted to share it with people, I got a couple of different ideas, but it is, it's our building, so I just want to be clear with everybody, that's what it is moving forward. People got strong reservations offline, maybe...
We want to keep it alive.
What?
We do, we do want to keep it alive.
We do.
Our next meeting date, notwithstanding that we just said we will add a standalone meeting, October twentieth at six PM, November tenth at nine thirty AM, and November seventeenth at six PM. All of those meetings would be here. If we add any standalone meetings, I will do them exclusively via Zoom, to be respectful of everybody's time, and to be respectful of Wind Cam that we're not adding meetings that they don't have, aren't anticipating. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call votes required. Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wind Cam.
Thank you.
I'm going to end our recording.
You can end the meeting.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.